So ECAT, are we ready? We'll flash the light. All right. Um, those will go. So, all right, we are live. So, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 18th, meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. In a few minutes, we will open up a joint meeting with our brethren from Conservation Commission. So, and just for anybody that's here regarding 58 Mill Street, Owl Ridge Road, and 418 Depot Street, we have received requests to continue those, and we'll get to those a little later. Just in case I'm out there for those, those won't be heard tonight. So, first off, we have a continued public hearing for six Ford Circles, special permit common driveway, 19-176.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Farrier from Holborn Engineering.
You want to mount Lady Mike?
Yeah, I think they can usually pick them up. They'll flash it. You can hold it.
Last meeting we were at with you, Mr. Chairman, a few weeks ago, we just had some back-and-forth on the width of the existing driveway on Ford Circle. We agreed to increase it to 18 feet. Right now, it's currently a 10-foot driveway that leads out to the existing house and has three or four feet of riprap on either side. We've agreed to replace that and pave it, so we'll have five foot of additional paving on the left side of the road, three foot on the right side. So, in the end, we'll have an 18-foot wide roadway within Ford Circle, as we discussed at the last meeting. So, that's where we left it. That was the only issue that we had.
No, that was the last comment.
So, that wraps us up.
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you like us to close the public hearing?
I would appreciate that.
Motion, motion, like, yeah. Public hearing. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the special permit common driveway application at six Ford Circle.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Well, that's it, night. Motion to adjourn. All right. So, I think you can leave too.
All right. So, I'll call this meeting of Eastern Conservation Commission, joint meeting with the planning board, so order. And I guess we're going to start off. Do you want to introduce?
Yeah, we have a re-accomplished notices.
Do you want me to read this?
Would you mind?
Okay. The Easton Planning and Zoning Board and the Easton Conservation Commission will hold a joint public hearing on February 18th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in this room, on three applications from Sawmill Village in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, Chapter 131, Section 40, and the Easton Wetland Protection Bylaws, Chapters 227 and 503. These applications are for work located at 468R, 560, 568, and 582R, Foundry Street. Number one, approval of a definitive subdivision to be known as Sawmill Village. Number two, request for a special permit other under Easton Town Zoning Code. Number three, notice of intent for work associated with the proposed internal roads, stream crossing pathways, et cetera. Copy of the applications and plans may be reviewed on the Easton Planning and Zoning Board or Easton Conservation website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the proposed applications should appear at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, what we will do tonight, I'm going to read a very quick summary of how we got to this point, and then the applicants will give a presentation. We will then hear from Andrea Langhauser, the acting director of planning, in terms of staff report and current status of care review. We'll then throw it around to both Conservation Commission and the planning board for questions or comments, and then we'll open it up to the audience. If anybody in the audience cares to ask a question, ask. What we'll do at that point, we'll set up a microphone on the stand. You just come over to that. I can clarify yourself to address for the record, and we'll take it from there. We do have a pretty full agenda tonight, the planning board, quite a bit of zoning work we're doing. So, depending on how long this goes, at some point, you know, this is just the first of what show these several meetings for this project, we may have to end it before all the comments. But we'll just play that back here, but I just want to let that know if we get a couple hours out. So, just a couple, so in about 2011, the Town of Easton, the community preservation committee with representatives from a number of committees in town and at-large residents, considered purchasing the, what had then been the decommissioned foundry site, and found that, with the residents in town, there wasn't flavor for that. Wasn't a very formal process, which just came up in few meetings with some sidewalks. They looked at maybe having it for fields, maybe creating it for open space, but the majority of the time felt they wanted to have it kept in play, I guess, for future development, maybe tie it into a neighborhood or economic development. In the master plan envisioned Eastern, which wrapped up in December of 2018, and volume three, the action plan, some of the items which I think tie into this property, we've got two neighborhoods and housing. We're looking for diverse, broad range of housing types. We're looking to identify areas for possible higher density zoning and encourage the protection of open space. Excuse me. We're looking to create walkable village neighborhoods, consider areas for compact housing districts, and protect the character of residential neighborhoods. To that point in 2018, the planning and zoning board was successful in having unanimously passed a town meeting, compact neighborhood overlay district for this site. Some of the highlights of this, we limit how single-family homes detach, limit to 1,800 square feet, limited to two bedrooms. The planning and zoning board will have architectural approval on the exterior to, you know, ensure we fit into the residential character of the neighborhood of the town. And substantial, in this case, substantial mitigation in the form of traffic light and turning lanes at the intersection of Paquonica and Foundry Street, and substantial monies towards the design of future improvements of Foundry Street, where we envision sidewalks, lighting, and other amenities to truly tie the entire district together. The planning director, town administrator, myself as chair of the planning board, and the planning board, we've held preliminary meetings with Mr. Lincoln and his team. There've been a number of proposals on this in terms of number of units. I'll let Ricky this day get into that, but there's been many versions, and tonight, the version that is presented, I think, is the one that works best. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of both the commission and the planning and zoning board. Andrea, good evening. For those that don't know me, my name is Walter Marioni. I am an attorney with the law firm of Marioni, Shaw, Deese, and Udi. To my left with me this evening is Mr. Rick Lincoln. Rick is the owner of the subject property, the developer, and will be the builder. We have many members of Conoco engineers with us tonight that will be speaking and making presentations. The idea, from our perspective, and I think Greg just did a very nice job of sort of giving the procedural history and the background of the property, what I would like to do just very quickly is sort of weave into that timeline, Rick's involvement with the property, how we got through that process and ended up sitting here this evening, and then turn the project over to, in three stages, the gentlemen that are here representing Mr. Lincoln, to first give a background on the civil, then, secondly, to give a background on the wetlands considerations, obviously more tailored towards the Conservation Commission, although I think it's, you know, all of these things overlap, and then, given the history of the site and prior uses out there, or particular prior use of a foundry, we recognize the long history and concern of members of the public, members of the neighborhood, and people in town hall and on the boards with respect to environmental issues. Mr. Lincoln's done a lot of environmental testing out there, and we have Mr. Lincoln's LSP here tonight, so we'd like to give a brief overview and presentation on those issues. I think those sort of are the broad stroke of what we can accomplish in the amount of time that we have tonight before everybody wants to go home and go to bed. So, just very, very briefly, because again, I think Greg did a really nice job of sort of giving the background. Rick was approached in late 2017, early 2018, about the possibility of purchasing the foundry site. This property is actually made up of two separate properties. Immediately when he was approached, we set up meetings with town officials. We met numerous times with the then-town administrator, with Greg, with the then-town planner. Greg talked a lot about some of the things you heard today, and the vision of the town, in particular with the sewer project coming and path studies. There were some DHD programs that were around then that we explored the possibility of using or developing the site under. I think it was pretty clear all along with the idea of the site, and I think Rick was only interested in a residential project. I think that's what the town saw as the vision of the project. Based upon those conversations, and the idea of the zoning overlay district, which developed pretty quickly, Rick acquired the first portion of this property in early 2018, and again, that was the foundry site. As we moved towards that town meeting, where the overlay district bylaw was going to be adopted, as the planning board was working towards that goal, the town had been in conversations with the owner of the neighboring parcel. There was talk for several years about developing that. I don't want to speak for the town, but I think from what I saw and what I watched, the town wasn't necessarily thrilled with the direction that the then-developer was going in with the project, and suggested to both sides, the owner of the property and to Rick, that perhaps there'd be an opportunity there to, for Rick to acquire the property and to then expand the project. So, those conversations took place, and ultimately, in late 2018, after the bylaw passed, I think, I believe it was the end of October, Rick actually acquired that property. The development scheme of this property started out with 20-some, somewhat homes on the foundry site. It changed numerous times as the second site became part of it. There were schemes of single-family homes, combination of duplexes, single-family homes. Again, for many were to 20-something units, up into 60-something units. Obviously, the higher number was when there were duplexes involved. Initially, when the project was two sites, they were being treated separately in the sense that they didn't connect with a roadway. They had separate entrances onto 106. That became problematic. That was identified pretty quickly as problematic, given the traffic problems that have existed out there for a long time. After a lot of massage work, a lot of time with staff, a lot of time with Greg, a lot of time with Rick and his folks and his engineers, the project settled on what you see tonight, which is 46 two-bedroom units. All of those units are 1,800 square feet or less. The project has or is proposed for a single entrance across from Paquonica. That entrance will include a proposal for directional signals that will be installed. Right now, the proposal, the design is being worked on, but the proposal is that those will be installed by the developer at the developer's expense. So, where we are now, you know, from two separate projects to one project to now sort of a mid-range project in terms of number of units and impact, there's one, again, it's one project, there is a proposal as part of this for a clubhouse, for a pool, for extracurricular activity near the pool. There's a proposal to connect over town land, the two areas of the project, as well as connecting the project to the large tract of land that is part of the Bay Circuit Trail that is town-owned land. There's a proposed public parking space, so the members of the public can drive up there, park their cars, go down the way, and head out on the Bay Circuit Trail. So, that's generally the project, as we know today, the project requires two approvals from the planning and zoning board. It's a special permit for the overlay district and a definitive subdivision approval, and then there's a notice of intent that's been filed with the commission. At this point, if the chairs don't object, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Lincoln, civil engineer from Conoco, John Novak, and have him give a background on the project. I believe you have to speak into the mic. Does it make sense to hand the mic off?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Talk show host.
Yeah.
So, for the record, Jonathan Novak, Conoco engineers and scientists. The project consists of 26 units along the eastern side, as well as 20 units on the western side of the property, with a community clubhouse, as previously stated. We are currently meeting all of the 10 DEP stormwater drainage standards. The project is kind of considered a mix of redevelopment and new development, as the foundry site was a previously development site. We are staying within, in the majority of the area of the foundry site, we're staying within the previous disturbed area. The cul-de-sac that goes off to the east is obviously, it goes over the septic for that side of the property, or for the foundry site. We are using a mixture of conventional curb and gutter drainage, as well as low-impact design where we have curb rakes that, so there's no catch basins, it just directs stormwater flow into sediment floor bays and detention basins. We have a couple of constructed stormwater wetlands for mitigation of the flow, which is going to be in this zone right up against the riverfront. We felt that that was a good, a good use, because it was right up against the, in the resource area. There's approximately 2,600 linear feet of roadway over the three separate roads. We have kind of a village concept on this side, where we have the very small squared-off front access garages and some rear access garages, and then, obviously, the cul-de-sac, the majority of them are the front access. The same units are going to be on both sides of the facility, but it's pretty straightforward. We do have a stream crossing that we are going to be fully designing once the, we had approval for where we have it currently shown. And then, the site is going to be tied in via lift stations or gravity flow to the new pump station, which is just to the west of the pool area and clubhouse. So, we're not going to be going back into the street with our sewer. We'll be coming in and tying directly into the lift station right there. It's pretty straightforward on the civil side. If you guys have any questions, we can go through that, and I know that in the, we do have kind of some iterations that we sent over, I don't know if you guys have it, that we sent over today, of the iterations of the different layouts that we had for part of the environmental assessment that we did.
John, do you mind speaking about the grading over there on the foundry site?
So, on the foundry site, it's pretty much a fill site. We're not going to be compromising any of the existing area that where the foundry was. We're lifting the entire site, and this is to allow us to get separation for our groundwater, and then also just for the, to be able to gravity feed the sewer from the cul-de-sac all the way back to the lift station, to minimize the construction costs and having multiple lift stations on the, for the property.
But the average is?
Oh, yeah, the average, yeah, yeah, the average is what, five to 10 feet of fill across the entire site? So, the majority of the structures there, the, kind of the way that it's designed, is that we're anticipating the footings to be in above existing grade right now, so.
I should note, I have your full set. If you know a particular sheet you want to go to, I can do that.
So, if there's, if we just want to go rip through the presentation portion, you can pass it off to Mike Toohill for the environmental.
Please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Toohill from Conoco Engineers and Scientists, and we met about a month ago, Stefan, with your Conservation Commission. Rick and I came in, gave an informal presentation. Tonight, what we'd like to do is just kind of give an overview of how the project has evolved, and what resources we have out there, and where we are in the design process with regard to resources and with regard to mitigation of resources. We have a comment letter from your peer reviewer that we're going to be going through, and we know that we're going to continue tonight. So, there are lots of individual items that will need to be addressed over the next several weeks in order to be able to satisfy the Wetland Protection Act and satisfy the bylaw. So, the purpose tonight is just kind of to go through an overview of the process.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows that the letter was dated the 14th of February, and I love it was posted on the 14th as well.
Yeah, Friday.
So, we literally just received it the other day, so.
Yeah, we've read through it, and there's a lot, there's work that we have to do, there's work that we have to do together with your peer review with Andrea to address all those issues. So, that's ongoing. So, for tonight, one of the things that John mentioned is we had a progression of plans, Rick has talked about this too. We had a progression of plans starting in 2018 of the site. So, I'm just going to flip through a series of kind of preliminary engineering plans, just showing concepts for development of site. And if you recall, we have, we have an east side, which is the previously developed forge area, and then we have the west side, which is primarily undeveloped, and they're separated by a river, and we have another river running along kind of the southwest side of the site. So, we have riverfront area and all kinds of riparian wetlands separating the two, and all around the site, isolated wetlands. This project went through an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation last year. That was, the delineation was peer-reviewed, and we went through and got, we got an ORAD, an Order of Resource Area Delineation, from the Conservation Commission. So, the wetland lines, the resource area lines are all locked down. So, now what we're dealing with is how does the design fit into the known resource areas on the site? So, this is an early plan. We started out with 70 homes in two separate clusters, and I think, as Rick or John had mentioned, we had two entrances going up to Route 106, less than ideal. Again, in 2018, slightly different concept, number of houses came down. It was 64 houses, again, two separate pods in east side and the west side. Here we are a little later in 2018, and still two separate sides, fewer homes, 53 homes total on the site. Part of the reason we're doing this is under the Wetland Protection Act, we have to do an alternatives analysis because of the riverfront area impacts, and we had brought two alternatives in, and Andrea asked if we could bring in some of the older alternatives as well to show you the progression through time. Here's another one in August of 2018. Now, we've started to connect the two sides of the site. If you see the road to the south, there are 64 homes. There are still two entrances up on 106, but the two sides of the site are connected. This is kind of the same, except all the homes on the western side have slid to the north a bit. So, still the same number of homes, but just slightly different locations for those homes. Here's another one in 2018, fewer homes, 56 homes. Same concept, east side, west side, connected by a road to the south. Then we got to the point where we were doing the ANRAD and the ORAD, and so we had a better understanding of where the resources area were out there. The site had been previously delineated years ago. Our reviewers found it a little different. We actually found a couple of additional resource areas out there, and we went through the process with the Conservation Commission. As part of that process, there were three areas that were identified as potential vernal pools, as well as the isolated and bordering vegetated wetlands on the site. So, this is a newer concept, 62 homes, I think, is the number. Again, east side, west side, two entrances up on 106, connected with a road to the south. This was one of the two alternatives that I put into the notice of intent, and we had quantification of impacts on this alternative. This is the current alternative. Again, two sides, east side, west side, no connection up to 106 on the west side, only on the east side, and no connection on the south. The connection now goes across the northern part of the site. So, that's how the two sides are being connected under the current proposal. So, the very corner down in kind of the southeastern corner, this is conservation land. I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer, but kind of come up in here. So, the corner underneath the red up here is conservation land to the south of the eastern This is what it looks like when we superimpose all of the resource areas as approved under the ANRAD, under the ORAD, onto the site. So, we have isolated wetlands, we have bordering vegetated wetlands, we have vernal pools and the vernal pool habitat and the 100-foot buffer on the vernal pool. There's riverfront area, there's flood plain out here as well. So, this is kind of showing how the parcels, how the east side and west side sit on top of the resource areas and buffer zones, primarily buffer zones. So, that gets kind of confusing with all those colors on there. Not that this isn't confusing, but what I want to do is step through, I broke out the east side and the west side of the site, and I broke each side into three categories: vernal pools, wetlands, isolated and bordering, and riverfront. These are the design plans that were submitted with the notice of intent, and what I did on each of these sets is I highlighted the resource area, and I highlighted the respective buffers. So, these are the vernal pools. The vernal pools on the site, there are three, they're on the western side of the site, and that's the wetland area in the middle. The first ring around the wetland is the 100-foot area away from the edge of the water, away from the pool itself. That's vernal pool habitat under the bylaw. And then, the next out, the yellow, is a 100-foot buffer from the vernal pool habitat. So, that's how the western side of the site sits with respect to primarily, again, the buffer zone of the vernal pools. This is how the eastern side sits on top of that buffer zone for the vernal pools. There's one vernal pool on the west, it's kind of in the southeastern corner of the west part of the site, and so its buffers extend into the eastern part of the site. west part of the site, and so its buffers extend into the eastern part of the site. So, that's how this plays in there. Next are isolated wetlands and bordering vegetated wetlands. So, again, all of, all of the wetlands are highlighted in green and there are two areas outside of them. There's the 50-foot buffer zone under the bylaw, that's kind of the purple color in there. And then there is, the yellow color is the 100-foot buffer zone and that's regulatory under both the bylaw and the Wetland Protection Act. So, again, this is how the western side of the site sits within the buffer zones of those isolated and bordering vegetated wetlands. This is the eastern side of the site, same thing, wetlands, 50-foot buffer, 100-foot buffer, all highlighted. It shows you that most of this site, the central part of this site, is outside of all of the wetland buffer zones. And finally, riverfront area. So, there are two perennial streams that go through the site. So, we have riverfront running along the southwestern part of the site and riverfront running right through the middle between the two sites. So, this is the western parcel and it shows the riverfront on the west and the riverfront on the east. And in this case, the colors are 100 feet out and 200 feet out. It's 200-foot riverfront area. So, the yellow is the 200-foot riverfront area. And the next one is the eastern part of the site. The river runs between the east and west side, so we only have the 100 and 200-foot riverfront area coming to the east onto the site, as you can see in this plan. And again, back to the overall. So, everything I just showed you on the last six slides is consolidated into this slide. So, that's where we are with respect to resource areas. So, you can see, white areas are outside of all buffer zones and resource areas. And you have to break down each piece, as I tried to do on the previous six slides, to know which area you're in. So, you can be within several areas. You can be within the buffer zone to vernal pools and riverfront and buffer zone to BBW at the same time. You can be in floodplain and buffer zone to BBW at the same time. So, the plans, we tried to show where the resource area lines were and where all the buffer zone lines are. Difficult to read and that's part of the comment that we got back from LEC is we need to, we need to go through these plans so that the commission and, and the public can understand what, what we're talking about on these plans. Okay, if you can go to mitigation A and B.
You want A first?
Yes, please.
Come on.
There we go. So, this is a zoom in of the crossing that connects the eastern and western parts of the site. And this crossing is proposed to be a bridge over the perennial stream and then work within, there is some work within bordering vegetated wetland and some work within isolated wetland in order to be able to put this road going from east to west. When we did the alternatives analysis between this alternative and the previous one, which I showed to the commission, we showed that actually this alignment has less wetland impact than does the southern alignment of connecting the two sides of the site. We also tried to pick a point along here where the wetland was narrowest, so we started to minimize the impact of the wetland. And Andrea's commented on it and LEC has commented on it. Maybe we can still move things around a little bit more to even minimize it further. Right now, this crossing is just under 5,000 square feet, it's about 4,900 square feet of wetland that will be affected by this crossing. So, to compensate, to mitigate for that, we've designed two wetland replication areas, one right next to the area of impact and that's that, that polygon that's just to the kind of north of the, of the roadway crossing. So, that's a wetland replication area, about 3,500 square feet, Megan, something like that? About 3,500 square feet in size, I can't read it, it's too far away. So, we have a wetland mitigation area that we're proposing here. And then if we can go to B. Thank you. This is on the southwestern side of the eastern parcel. It's where the stream comes down between the two parcels and it runs into a culvert right now. And the culvert's about 177 feet long. And as part of this project, what we're proposing to do is to remove that culvert, daylight the stream, put a meander bend back into the stream and build wetlands adjacent to the stream, basically where the culvert is right now. So, we will gain bank because the meander length is longer than the culvert length because the color's just nice and straight. So, once we take that culvert out, we're going to gain stream length, we're going to gain riparian wetlands. I think we have about 6,600 square feet of wetland down in this area here. And this area is also useful for flood mitigation, for floodplain compensation. So, this is where the floodplain compensation, the daylighting, and some of the wetland replication is proposed for the site. Another part of this project is to clean up, there's, there's some remnant debris that was left in the stream and the wetlands from the former use of the site. And part of the proposal is to clean up that wetland system and not with heavy machinery to make more impact than, you know, than we save, but to go in there with, with people and then maybe with a bobcat for bigger pieces and remove some of the material out. Most of the material is pretty small, we can just pull it out. Okay, so, that would be from where the culvert starts to the north, adjacent to the old foundry site. We'd be cleaning out that wetland area. So, that's also mitigation for the impacts that are proposed as part of the project. And finally, if you can go to the impacts table. So, this is a revision of the table that I actually brought into the Conservation Commission about a month ago. So, we refined some of the numbers. If you remember, we, we talked about there were two plans, one with the road to the south, that's the alternative plan, and one with the road in the current configuration along the north, that's the, that's the proposed plan. And in, in virtually every case of...
Sorry.
That's okay.
I can't do it all.
Yeah.
I can't see it all at the same time.
You don't have to, we can, we can, we can go down after.
Okay.
We can just scroll down.
Okay.
So, this is the proposed plan and all of the impact numbers for all the different resource areas, the alternative plan with all of the impact areas for all the resource areas. The proposed plan has fewer impacts than the alternative. So, putting that road to the north is less impactful to the environment than putting it to the south. So, now if we can scroll just a little further down.
Yeah.
Want to do it?
Yep.
One of the things under the Wetland Protection Act is riverfront area. There's a cap, there's a limit of effect within riverfront area and that's 10% of the riverfront area on the site. And this project right now is about nine, just over 9% of the, the impact is just over 9% of the riverfront area. And again, the riverfront area on the site is separated into previously disturbed and undisturbed. I haven't separated in this table, but we'll talk about that as we go further in the hearing with the commission. And finally, the restoration numbers are given down below. So, restoration area A, which is the area to the north, is just over 3,000 square feet. Restoration area B, which includes the daylighting of the stream, is almost 7,000 square feet. And we're going to have a gain of, of bank of about 235 linear feet. If you count it on both sides, we're actually going to have 470 linear feet of bank because we have two sides of perennial stream. So, we're gaining a lot of bank by taking that culvert out. So, again, Mr. Chairman, just kind of an overview of where the, how the project evolved, where we are right now with analysis, realizing that we still have, you know, plan work and calculation work and, and detail work to do with, with Andrea and with your peer reviewer and then ultimately with the commission. Thank you.
Great, thanks for that presentation. Certainly helpful that you broke out the, the different resource areas. Yeah, overlaid, it can be, it can be a little much to look at, for sure. That's very helpful. All right, so Andrea, did you want to talk at all or were we going to toss it over to LEC for some commentary?
LEC is here tonight, Claire.
Excuse me, just, did you guys have one more part of your presentation to give?
The environmental portion of it, if you would like us to do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, my apologies.
No, 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 no.
Now, why don't you go wrap?
Your meeting.
Yeah, no, you guys wrap up your stuff.
Yeah, so, we have an LSP with us tonight, Brian Klingler from Conoco. Brian's got a lot of history with the project, so if you want to take us through.
Absolutely. I don't have any slides, but I was just basically going to provide a brief history of the environmental diligence that's been conducted at the site. The inverse environmental study was conducted by Rizzo Associates in 1990. They performed soil and groundwater testing out there and they had found test results were increased, showed concentrations of both total petroleum hydrocarbons and low-level PCBs above the then DEP standards. They notified DEP of the release and subsequently performed a phase two environmental study as well as a risk characterization. They ultimately filed back in pre-1993, 1990, what's called a waiver completion statement and that was accepted by DEP with a note for their action determination. Conoco got involved in the site in 2017. We conducted 20 test pits at the site and we did a full suite of environmental compounds, including volatile organic compounds, PCBs, total petroleum hydrocarbons by EPH, MCP14 metals and semi-volatile organic compounds. We had one test pit that had an exceedance of the reportable conditions, both, it was lead and zinc. We subsequently performed a limited removal action and no, no, nullifying the reportable condition at the site. The, in 2019, that was in 2017, in 2019, we conducted a series of borings in groundwater monitoring wells in the area of Leaching Field. Again, a full suite of compounds were submitted for analysis and we had no reportable conditions or concentrations that would require reporting to Massachusetts DEP. I also, the last due diligence we did at the site, again, was in 2019, we performed 14 asbestos samples. None of those were positive for asbestos. And that wraps it up.
You don't have the map in there, do you?
Yeah. Which map?
You know, the testing map there?
Yeah, it's in the report.
That's right. Oh, so it might be.
It's a test in the last report that Brian prepared recently.
If you can't find it, that's all right.
Yeah, I wasn't ready for that, sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't find it. Yeah, yeah, they look the same from, from a distance, right? Where do you think it is? Other information, maybe?
It's another information.
What happened?
Let's see what you did.
Top one.
Yeah, three times it went up this, this morning, guys. Let me keep going down.
There we go.
And you want to maybe talk through some of the, the testing, because I believe, was it the, the boxed in area, that's where the hotspot was found and was cleaned out and virgin soil was put in?
Correct. And if you look at those as our test pits, we had good site coverage at the site, went down to 10 feet, didn't really see any discernible levels of contamination. We used a photoionization detector, which is a glorified soil sniffer. Everything looked good, the analysis, with the exception at one area. We did the excavation, was all set. So, overall, the site conditions were quite, quite favorable. And then we, in the, that corner of the property, we did do, focused in on this, due to a comment, we focused on the septic system and that, that proved to be, there was no evidence even from a GW1 perspective in terms of groundwater, groundwater had no concentration, so...
Can you explain the GW1 real quick?
A GW1 would be a potable condition. It's the most stringent under the Massachusetts DEP standards. So, if you can drink, basically can drink the water. So, we had no concentrations in SX. And again, each of these analysis and data points were the full suite of compounds you could detect under what's called the disposal criterion analysis. So, that includes every, every compound I mentioned, so it's a full suite.
You said you went down to 10 feet, was the, the testing done at different intervals of depth?
Yeah, we, we measure them every two feet as we go and we log, and we log the test pits to that level. And then once you enter the groundwater table, you go a little bit further to make sure there's nothing of a surprise. But again, it was, it was cleaned through the groundwater table.
So, for the folks that may be watching on, at home or in the audience, why don't you just, we have red circles up there, very technical, so we have one, one just differentiate just so those who...
Yeah, the red circles were, the red circles were our test pit locations, 20 of them, and the blue circles with the cross arrows are groundwater monitoring wells.
And the green?
Green, I can't even see, I'd have to see the analysis what that is.
They don't, they, they don't have a prefix, they're just zero, zero, one through zero, zero.
Oh, I'm sorry, those were, I'm sorry, those were, those were asbestos samples.
Oh, the suspect ACM samples that were?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, all the suspect ACM samples were negative for asbestos.
Those are 14.
Correct, yeah, just to, in terms of a brief history of the environmental, I think in 2012, they did demolish the existing mill building and they got into trouble, the then contractor didn't do an official, sort of effective job of analysis. So, the DEP did get involved in an attorney general's office and they made them remove all the materials, asbestos waste, and that achieved full closure by both DEP and the AG's office. So, we weren't involved in the property at that point.
And could you just give us a brief synopsis of the LSP program and the kind of requirements on state level on that?
Sure. An LSP are privatized individuals who pass the licensure and have a certain requisite number of years of experience, a minimum of 10, have a degree in sciences, and we have required to do, due diligence with respect to coursework and whatnot. I personally have close to 700, 770 permanent solutions with the Massachusetts DEP and have, have really no audits to speak of that are negative.
Question?
Well, I thought we got to throw it to the audience later.
Sure, yeah, we could throw it to the audience later.
Because once we open the gate, why we...
Yeah, that's true.
You know, I'd like to, you know, I don't, maybe we would work a little differently, but I'd normally, I'd like to, when they're set, throw it out to Andrea and then to the board and then we go up to the audience.
That's fine, sure. Yeah.
Keep this available. Okay. Learned a lot tonight. The Conservation and Planning Board, Planning Board is looking for, they're requesting a special permit under the new compact neighborhood overlay district and a definitive subdivision. In my staff report, item number, we, we do talk about the, the existing condition zoning applications. There is certain information that normally you get in an application that they, the applicant intends to provide. I'd like your guidance on item number five. There are certain additional information that, that can be requested but wasn't provided. The traffic study, a traffic study for the, the property, there is an analysis being done on the street, so I, I don't know if you have something on traffic that you want to provide or not. Secondly, there's water distribution analysis, the, the water department hasn't commented yet, but they will need to. Hydrogeological study of sensitive areas, in, whether you do that or not, this is a, this is of Zone 2 for the public water supply in the town of Easton and the public water supply in the town of Norton. The uses that are proposed here, the residential uses and the fact that it's on sewer are all allowed uses. The, but they do also need to evaluate their floodplain. The floodplain is known as, the Zone A is, one, there's three different sections of floodplain. One of them doesn't have a base flood elevation and I think you've probably begun work on trying to establish what that base flood elevation should be. So, that's information that is needed in order to determine the, the amount of filling in the floodplain and in order to determine compensatory storage under wetlands and under zoning and to make sure that all your structures are outside the floodplain in the end. The environmental impact report on this property might be a very, is, is a normally a required element for a planning board review. Under conservation, I think even at the high overview that you saw, there's a lot of filling in bordering vegetated wetlands. They have a, a stream crossing that actually meets the DEP stream crossing standards, very nicely done. And then it, and then it gets into filling. There is also three different, isolated wetlands that are being filled in total. There is also three different isolated wetlands that are being filled in total. And that, under, we haven't made a determination at the ORAD stage at Conservation as to whether those were state jurisdictional or just local jurisdictional. We need to know that information to know if we're dealing under the state regs or not. But even under the local regs, this is an AC/EC. And no structures within 100 feet of a wetland or pervious structures, pervious surfaces within 100 feet of a wetland. And they're proposing to fill three isolated wetlands. So the environmental impact report of the planning board will be really helpful in the wetlands review because the wetlands has to identify the type of functions that those wetlands are performing and whether or not those wetlands are significant to the interests of the act and whether or not those interests can be mitigated on-site. Conservation has the ability to ask for a wildlife evaluation, which is a type of environmental impact report. You might want to roll those things together. In terms of solar orientation is normally provided. You probably have that somewhere, too. So we talked about aquifer protection. We talked about these being allowable uses. We talked about compact neighborhood special permit. The reasons for this special permit, not surprisingly, are well addressed by this application. Just to remind people, the proposed project, to get a, to be consistent with the Comprehensive Neighborhood District, they want, the smaller homes in a residential neighborhood setting should have distinctive and attractive site development, preserve open space, and be proximate to services and employment opportunities. We know where this is relative to its proximity. We know it's protecting a lot of open space in addition to, you know, along the very important vernal pools, as Mr. Toohill mentioned, is being protected. A lot of plan information is needed. Some little, maybe not little things. There are three pieces of land left in common ownership. There's a section over to the west, over here, sorry, to the east. That is a, that's a parcel being left in common ownership. This parcel B goes all the way over to here. And then parcel C is from here and around and down and over. So the, those should be further explained in terms of ownership use, level of protection. This, this application for a zone, for a planning board came in with the required forms and the plan set, but doesn't have the narrative. That could explain a lot of this information. DPW has commented, they had comments sent to the engineer in January 12, 20. And they, DPW hopes that information gets incorporated in. I have my comments in here in two different ways. At the end of my comments, there's additional information needed. Got that? Woody and Curran has a stormwater review. Goes into, it goes into road alignments, goes into types of housing types. There are four different types of housing types. There are architectural renders brought in. I don't know if you're ready for that or not. And it goes into the floodplain analysis. The wetland analysis done by LEC also has quite a few comments saying we need more information. And both of those have been provided to the applicant. Regarding the hazardous, regarding the contaminated soils of the past, they have been, they are, they are filling over it. And LEC has asked that they identify the levels of fill at the particular areas where they've been concerned. But I did want to point out that the applicant recognizes in, on their plans on Sheet 2, what their requirement is under the, under the state law, which is, should they encounter any contaminated soils or groundwater during the course of construction, they will stop construction. They will, they shall stop construction. They will check the soil, check the groundwater, and will take whatever appropriate action is necessary under the state law. That's recognized in their plan set. And certainly, it should come forward as a definitive statement in your, any decision. So this, it's a good concept. Lots of work has been done. A lot more work needs to be done. And you can read the details in three different letters here.
Thank you. Is that everything you have to say now?
Sure. Stop there.
So I guess we could throw it open. Any questions or comments or anything?
Well, I guess maybe just over to LEC. We got the letter. The applicant has it and is working on digesting it. You know, I think the gist is we need a lot more information. But aside from that, any other key points that we should pull from that?
You need a mic.
Hello, Claire Hoagbone with LEC Environmental. I think everything's pretty much spelled out in the letter. And I think Andrea covered a lot of the stuff in her discussion. And I think the applicants are aware of a lot of the things that they need to cover. I think the takeaway was really that there were some discrepancies between the plans, the forms, and the narrative that need to be ironed out. There are some performance standards under the state and local regulations that need to be addressed. And just providing more details within the design to essentially meet those performance standards. But I think everything's pretty much spelled out in those reports. There's not really much beyond that to bring up.
It might sound like a regulatory point, but the list of waivers that they're requesting for, I assume they're going to request for planning and for conservation haven't been articulated.
Yeah, I saw that note in the reports.
Sure. Guys over here, have any questions for tonight?
Well, it was a very thorough presentation with a number of things that are listed in the, your report and by Woodward and Curran that'll obviously need to be gone through and addressed. I didn't know, one of the items that Andrea mentioned was the traffic study. And I know that there's been concern over traffic. And I know it's been mentioned before in prior meetings. But do you have any, are you going to, as your own entity, be looking into that or conducting your own report aside from whatever the town might be doing?
Well, the short answer is yes. So we've had a couple of meetings. One was this last week with DPW. So my traffic engineer, we did the traffic study quite some time ago before I really purchased the property, just to make sure all the sightlines were okay. Since then, all the work has been toward a proposed light and then a, developing a turn lane over there on Foundry Street. Subsequent to a Plan B based on, you know, collaborating with DPW and also town administration. We've narrowed the design a little bit. Not in width, but just, we've polished up the plan. Now, we're going to come back with a third iteration because the town, we're trying to jive with the town's long-term plan. You know, Walter might be able to speak a little bit more eloquently about it than me. But there's a, there's a five, say, seven to 10-year plan that's, has a much more expanded scope, I think, from maybe the target all the way to, you know, bike lane, sidewalk, and everything else. So we don't want to do it and then have it blown up. So we're trying to meet in the middle a little bit. But all that's part and parcel with, it's much beyond just a traffic study. But there is, there will be a light there. So, and some kind of road widening and a turn lane, probably. On a turn lane. We're not 100% sure about the turn lane yet.
And I did see on the Woodward and Curran report that there was mention of, the typical requirement would be to have three access points. But I'm assuming that there's been lengthy discussion and progress that has led to this current plan, which makes the most sense for one point of entry in the light, as you described.
And some of that conversation, which is not apparent from the plans, is, you know, I've agreed to fire sprinklers in all the houses. And I think that helps with the design quite a bit, at least from fire department viewpoint.
As far as to Woodward and Curran, they're probably not aware of the long history and the work that you guys saw tonight. The staff and Greg have been intimately involved with, that, you know, sort of evolved into this. So I think at the first meeting between the Conical folks and Woodward and Curran, a lot of that information will be exchanged and hopefully they'll update their comments.
I think they were addressing the fact that there was no narrative. And so they didn't know which waivers you were seeking.
My only other question, somebody mentioned that the average fill on the site was roughly between 5 and 10 feet. And could you just explain that a little bit more, like how that, like why that is or how that's come about or with the main...
It's probably better for John, but, you know, I'll start with, I mean, a lot of it is just starting with the grade at Foundry Street. And not, existing grade drops way off and then just heads to the stream. We'd like to pick that up and make it a much more gradual grade. And then some of it ties into stormwater ponds and, you know, drainage and so forth.
Yeah, you're required to have four feet of separation, two to four feet of separation for either stormwater facilities. So in an effort to do that, we have to raise the bottom of the site up. And then to positively drain either in the low impact, we have to raise the site up as well. But from Foundry Street down onto the property, it drops off fairly drastically. So the last thing you want to do is have a car park like that, trying to shoot out. So that whole entrance was going to come up regardless of the fact. And then with doing that and analyzing and looking at the entire kind of site as a whole, it allows us to kind of create an entire pad area, which, you know, we're going to bring in fill anyway, and then have walkouts along the side. So it allows us to kind of taper the grade off and using the property or the housing themselves, the houses themselves as kind of retaining walls. So it allows the aesthetic view and then also the functionality of a stormwater system to work without doing anything crazy where we drop straight off and then have to worry about having the separation that we need for recharge and all the things that are required by DEP. We did, we received the comments from Woodward and Curran today. That we'll work with them to alleviate their concerns. And again, some of them are just, just kind of working out the design concept as we have it. And we might not express it as clear as it is in our head on paper, so.
I don't want to hog up all of the planning board questions. I just had one other question, which I think we might, maybe we'll get to as the plans again continue to progress and we see more of the architectural set. But I know, and I know there was mention here about the solar orientation report. But has the distribution of the plans that have garages in the rear versus garages in the front, has that mostly been determined due to the way the lots have been configured and whatever restrictions there are? Or has it been based on, like, optimizing the solar orientation? Or is it been due to trying to maintain a street presence? Like, I'm just kind of wondering how that was, how that's come about.
It's essentially been pure topography. So the garage rears, we came in with, actually, it was probably one of Mike Toohill's plans earlier. We had all garage rears over here on the Foundry site. But it was because the garage is in the back, it was creating all these huge retaining walls along the back. And then from a functionality standpoint, people living in the houses, I mean, you go down in your basement, you're going to have to walk under your garage. You can't even get to the back of the house. So it was really that simple. And then, you know, again, we tasked the architect with trying to come up with a decent, you know, garage front design. And I think they have. There's really one basic floor plan with maybe two or three elevations. So we weren't that scientific with, you know, the reason we did it. But we think it worked out. But it's just the geography out there.
So the preference or the starting point was to maybe locate the garages at the rear and then changing from that was due mostly to topography?
Right. And that also was creating almost like these common driveways, you know? And then they both go like this. And it's like, I just, it's not a great, great setup, you know, long-term. So that's why we mixed it up. And I can't remember what the percentages are, garage front versus, I thought it was close to 50/50, but I don't remember exactly.
20 front, 26 rear.
Funny you.
Thank you, thanks.
So I think, and maybe Claire can help clarify something for me. The, one of the concerns, you know, the west side is a much more wetland resource-intensive area than the east side. And there's three features on that side that I don't know, I didn't see in your evaluation, what the impact on the vernal pools were. And I don't know if that was anything that was presented by the applicant or that's something they definitely need to include here. I mean, that may be one of the reasons why we need a wildlife impact study in general as well. So I don't know, Claire, if you can comment on that a little bit.
So as they noted on that western portion of the site, there are three potential vernal pools. With I think that pink outlining being the 100-foot vernal pool habitat. And then the yellow line being the 100-foot buffer zone to that habitat. So the work that they're proposing does not impact that 100-foot habitat area. It does extend into the buffer zone to that habitat. So that's something that a waiver request would need to be associated with. And I can't recall off the top of my head as far as the local performance standards that need to be addressed. But I can recall that from the narrative, I don't believe they were addressed. So that is something that would need to be brought up in some sort of supplemental information.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think from a Conservation Commission standpoint, we're talking about three potential vernal pools in a diverse area from a wetland resource area with wildlife habitat. This is not previously disturbed area where these vernal pools are. And that just is something you guys are going to need to include in your, in your plan and address the impacts you're making on those areas and the buffer zones. The buffer zones are resource areas under the local bylaw. So we need to understand that impact. It is in an AC/EC, once again, which raises the threshold even higher than a normal performance standard. So I think those are a couple of areas that, right off the bat, when I was looking at the information, and Claire mentions it very briefly in the, in her report. But I just wanted to point that out, that that is going to be an area for concern. And we had mentioned that in our pre-meeting, that that west side was a much more difficult area for us to address just because of, I mean, your, you know, wetland person showed us how difficult it was by overlaying all the different resource areas that we were dealing with.
Yeah. And if I may, just as a reminder, for, under the state regulations, for the work that's within the riverfront area, the threshold there is usually 5,000 square feet or 10%, whichever is greater. And even if that percentage gets to the 10%, but is still exceeding the 5,000 square feet of impact, the commission still has the discretion to request that wildlife habitat evaluation under those performance standards. So.
Thank you. Sorry. I think that was my single comment, so.
My, my concern is just wildlife impact and doing that, you know, the test and checking all that out. Cause I was out there and it seemed like I was reporting it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you were, you were out there looking for, to see if we actually had any trails out there.
I did.
Trails, basically.
Yeah, there was trails from the, probably the homeowners that are near the area.
Yeah.
Looks like R T V trails. They've been there for years. I don't think they're even used anymore. But everything else out there, but beyond that, the Foundry Street, Foundry, there is just woods and some, and old, old relics. We have stone walls and all that stuff.
Thanks.
Right. There's been a couple of mentions tonight about A C E C. Andrea, you mentioned it and Rory just now. And just for folks who don't know what that means, it's an area of, of critical environmental concern. And this, the entirety of this project is within the Canoe River area of critical environmental concern. So I'd like to just toss that out for info. Andrea, in your comments, you referred to the master plan and I don't recall if you mentioned anything about the climate change piece of the, the master plan?
So the town has been designated a municipal vulnerability protection town in, from the state because you just did the M V P plan. We just got a grant to do implementation because, because we got that designation. The issues in the municipal vulnerability plan don't speak to this development directly, other than, other than the fact that there's likely to be more local storms. And so, so your floodplain, maintaining the floodplain storage capacity you have and improving upon that was, you know, central to the issue. You know, this is just downstream of, of your two ponds. And they are talking about flood storage here.
Right. Yeah, thank you. So that brings up a question about, you know, the, the specs of a hundred-year flood, you know, there are different definitions or standards for that. So I would like us to be aware of, there are some government agencies that are, that work in changing, updating those numbers to, because I think the definition of a hundred year flood that was some years in the past is generally regarded as not, not particularly useful or up to date at this time. So.
Well, I think we're having ten-year storms every two years.
Exactly.
I think they were in the middle of revising it and then they said, wait, no, that's long enough. We need to revise it again.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, so you know, part of this project is, it's not just for people who need homes now. It's for the children of people who need homes now. It's for, it's for our water quality down the road. This is, you know, people need housing and we need to, and people need clean water. So let's think 30, 40, 50 years down the road, but like, let's, let's keep that in mind.
And I think, I think some of what you're talking about and what I did mention with the vulnerability study, is that you're still looking at the floodplain levels and everything so that we can get a better definition of the, the study of that, correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good points.
John? So I'm a little something new, but just hearing this information, I guess my, I guess my comments would be, you know, it seems like the applicant needs to provide more information. In addition, they also need to provide the I L S F calculations to determine whether it's going to be triggered into more state impacts. So now I'm going to be interested to see more of that information coming up. I'm also, and like Rory said regarding the vernal pools, I'd be interested to see if any of those vernal pools are survivable to kind of like distinguish whether we need to, you know, request a, or recommend a wildlife corridor for those critters that potentially could be using that area. So.
Good points.
Very good. Yeah. No, I mean, I think everybody brought up some good points here. You know, I think one of my big concerns from the get-go was getting eyes on the environmental stuff. I think I'm pretty pleased with a lot of the work that's been done around that and, you know, it's great. I apologize if I forget your name. So Brian, thank you for coming out today and kind of giving us a little more detail on that. I, I think a big piece of this is going to be the, the mitigation and how we handle that. There's a couple of areas of proposed mitigation already that kind of handles specifically that river crossing, but there's going to be a whole buttload of mitigation associated with filling in those wetlands if we deem that's acceptable. So we're going to have to kind of, I mean, I feel like I'm kind of just repeating what we've said already, but it's, you know, kind of just drive home the point that's, that's, that's the tough area right there. And that's going to be kind of the big hole to, to, to figure out. But we've figured out difficult challenges before. So looking forward to see where, you know, the next batch of information comes in.
If I may add, there's a, I've read that there's a growing body of evidence that suggests that mitigation wetlands have a kind of high failure rate over time. So we want to make sure that we keep that front of mind also.
I'm ready to go to the audience if anybody has. You guys all good?
Yeah.
I think we're good.
So Rick, would you mind just grab one of those mics and hop into the stand? And so folks, just as I said earlier, if you just identify yourself for the record and if Mike just wanted to present, but he cares to comment or the question.
Hi, Vance Rosenberg, 49 Highland Street. A couple of questions, something that was brought up during the project, if contaminated ground and/or water are found, construction will stop and mitigation will begin. Is there testing that's taking place and what is the cadence of that testing?
Brian, you might be able to talk to that, right? Cause that would fall under the, under kind of jurisdiction.
Sure. So I'm answering plans. Anytime during construction, if we find a condition that doesn't, it's different than what we found, we do go out to the site as an L S P and we do now analyze the situation, take, excuse me, take testing and find out the aerial vertical extent of whatever the problem is. At that point, confirmatory analysis is performed and we make sure that it clears all state standards. So you're not allowed to, even under the Massachusetts Commonwealth, transport even gray soils from a site like this, sites that don't even meet a standard, that exceed the concentration. So we follow a very strict diligence pattern with respect to.
So someone from your team or your firm will be on-site during construction or what is, I guess that's my question, is that who's going to be actually monitoring that?
Typically you don't, typically it's responsibility of whoever's involved is the excavator. Unless you have an active, typically when you have environmental oversight, you have a release that you know exists and you're trying to monitor and then tangle it. In this case, the site is clean. So we don't go out necessarily cleaning construction sites and monitor for a problem to happen. We need to see a problem before we, we'll get involved.
Okay.
This is a point of information on that. How, how does an excavator identify when the site?
Well, I typically you, there's an olfactory evidence. If you come across a dry well or something and it stinks to high heaven, you know you have a problem. If we've done a baseline study and you have no exceedances and you're, you know, it's generally a clean site, the only way to make that determination is through the people that are doing the work on the property. There's no other, there's no other sort of checks and balances or else we'd have people everywhere looking for any soil disturbance for a release. You need to have at least some knowledge that it exists. So to answer your question, it's pretty, we, we, we do, I deal with a lot of containment sites and you know full well when you hit in one and an excavator is the first to smell it, often case.
I would, I would add if they're downwind.
But I mean, there's, there's visual, there's olfactory, there's all sorts of determinations. A dry well is discovered or something that unusual comes across. It's typically investigated. I know we've, we've, we've done a lot of work in construction sites and that's the pattern we follow. So that's all I can sort of relate to the board.
One of the question for the, maybe the planning committee. So living on Highland Street this past year has been obviously quite a challenge with the detour. Have there been considerations on what this new light and increased traffic flow will do to residents on Highland? Is there going to be any deterrence to prevent people from circumventing potentially additional piece of traffic on 123?
Well, I, I'll answer that one. I think it's important to remember right now, the last traffic study 10 years ago, 29,000 cars a day go by here, the majority from 495 to 24. It's probably going to be 40,000 within five years. Putting a light here in turning lanes allow coordination up the road with the lights in Bay Road, the lights up at Target. And so if you're questioning, I, I don't think there'll be, I know it was a tough summer with, with Highland traffic. Traffic's going to improve on, traffic flow is going to improve when, when a light goes in. I can say this as a resident of, of Paquanaque who's stuck in that many times. So I don't see the desire for folks to jump off of 106. It's going to flow better than, than it will.
Okay.
Than it does now, I should say.
Thank you.
Step on up.
Good evening. My name is George Allen. I live at 59 South Street. I've been a resident there almost 30 years. We've been quite, I've been through quite a bit there with the Foundry and all the benzene and everything else that they were discharging with the residents. We do have a very high rate of cancer in the area. One of my big concerns is once again, what's still buried at the Foundry. I have walked the Foundry personally. I have seen 55-gallon drums with the mobile label on them that are buried in the soil. So I'm still very, very concerned about that. The other thing that I'm worried about is the sewer system or the septic system, where they pulled the sludge out, they found mercury inside of it and a bunch of other carcinogens. So I'd like to have that addressed, please. How they're going to dispose of the current septic system.
Well, I, I know they did some testing around the septic system with the groundwater there.
Right. But the existing septic is here now. What are they going to do with that? Just collapse it in?
I don't believe they're doing, I don't believe they're doing any development over the septic.
Yeah, we are, but the leaching field is clean.
Oh, yeah, the, okay. Yeah. So I guess that's a question for you guys.
What about the storage that the, the.
What's the other thing? Was removed by the, you know, by the prior, that was part of the D E P cleanup. So.
Okay. Was that the.
We just did tests.
Was that a second, was that the original leaching field or was that, was that new at some point or newer?
Newer.
Yeah, it's newer, right. I think it.
And it failed then because the water was spewing out continuously. They have these, these two vents there, right?
But according to Porta Health, cause at one point we were going to try and tie into that while the sewer was coming by. Now we don't need to do that. But Porta Health had approved it back when, I can't remember, whatever the name of the Foundry was. They had upgraded the system and, and Porta Health approved it. So it's still usable, but we don't, we plan on dismantling it and getting soil out of the sands.
My name's Nat Eldridge and I'm here representing the people that own 1 Rollins Road, which is a corner lot on Highland and Rollins. And basically our concern is, is the elevation of the high watermark in that wetlands area that town basically owns. And the reason why I'm concerned about is like, is, is the impact of filling in some of those, what is it? Plains, floodwater plains. So in, I'm not big on public speaking, but.
Are you concerned about the filling in of the wetlands impacting?
Yeah, as far as the level of the, of the, the wet, you know, flood plains. And I'll explain why. Back at our property, it's about like, I think about 0.88 acres and probably about 40% of it is a low-line area that in the springtime primarily becomes kind of like a little pond from all the water from the adjacent properties flowing into the area. And right now there's a pipe that goes under Highland Street. And when the water level gets a little high in this pond, it flows through the water pipe across the road, you know, across Highland and then basically goes through the town's conservation land. And then I believe it probably ends up in the river there. But, so I'm just concerned like, is that, is, is filling in that floodplain area going to impact the water moving from our property to the, you know, to the river or whatever, to the, or to that wet area? And I used to work in Cranbury, so I know, I don't know much about wetlands per se. I, I know they need to be protected, but I do know something about water management. And filling in like floodplain areas is great with controlling water, but it also raises the level. So, and I just want to make sure the water's going to be able to easily, you know, transfer from my property into the river.
Want to talk a little bit about pre- imposed?
Yeah. So for stormwater design, D E P requires that pre- imposed rates not exceed what's going off of property now. We meet those standards. We meet those standards currently. And then to the, the discussion for floodplain compensatory storage, we're required, if any, every foot and every volume, cubic foot that we fill in floodplain, we have to replicate on the site, which we do right now. So there is a, there is a, there is no net loss of either floodplain wetland areas in this, for, for this development. So the project as currently proposed, also for the stormwater capacities won't increase the flow rates of the water coming off of our property onto the abutting property.
Yeah. So you don't see the level of that.
No, I don't. Yeah, we don't anticipate, yeah, we don't anticipate it to have an adverse effect, in fact.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Amy McManus, 51 Williams Street. I do take issue with the repeated reports that the site is clean. I do have some questions for Brian. So Brian started off talking about the history of the testing down at the site and jumped from 1988, 1990, all the way up to 2019 or 17 with, with the reports. I've done quite a bit of research of the history of the contamination at the site. And there's a lot more there than just what Rizzo stated and what the recent reports are. My interest in the Beltran Malleable Iron Foundry site was reignited when Stephanie Danielson, the former town planner spoke of it this past year in regards to the diff in Eastern Five Corners. She described a compact residential project consisting of up to 60 homes, a project that's integral to the diff. Many of the neighbors in that area feel compelled to support the development, which I understand as related to the betterments in that area. About six years ago, I expressed my concern to Greg over the site because the zoning had been changed and I knew that rezoning it for business would allow for residential. Around that same time, I was serving on a group that was looking at the history of the industrial contamination releases at another site, the shovel shop complex in Northeastern Village, which I live close to. During those discussions, I learned that damage from historic industrial areas typically occurs during the excavation and development process. So it's as you're excavating and developing a site, when you come upon these releases that we're just asked about. So in my opinion, knowing that this is an industrial site with a legacy that includes a dump that was not permitted, that was in use. a dump that was not permitted, that was in use for over 100 years, in which the Belcher Malleable Iron Company and Advanced Metals would dump all of their spent sand into, and that sand has been tested and was shown to be contaminated. There's no report, it may exist, Brian, but there's no report anywhere in anything that I've read, and I'd be happy to receive more information. In fact, I've asked for more information from Mr. Marioni and others about where is all this stuff gone? If it's clean, then where did the 100 years' worth of dumping go? If it's somewhere, if it's been removed, where are the reports that show that it's been removed? There's a septic system or leaching field that George mentioned, and I have great compassion for the people in that neighborhood, and I met with some of them this summer. I had some help when looking at some documents that I uncovered at the Board of Health. I had been asking for information, a public records request, and received almost nothing useful. So, I decided to go to the Board of Health and sit there and go through all the files at the Board of Health. It took me half of a day to go through the files, and the thing that I thought was most concerning was the sludge testing for that septic system. There were four carcinogens found in very high levels. Dichlorobenzene, methylphenol, chloranalein, whatever biz 2 ethyl hexyl phthalate is. And I don't know why, but that particular report, which was done by Barnstable, has never been brought up in any of, any of this discussions about this property. And to me, though, that is a big red flag. What happened after that was found? What happened after all of these chemicals were found? Was it remediated?
Tell me a time.
I'm almost, I'm almost done. So, today I read the report finally that I've been asking for since June, the Koneko, or, I'm sorry, I'm butchering the name, about your testing. And one of the things that came up in your testing is actually one of the, this biz 2 ethyl hexyl phthalate was found in the recent testing that you did, and then it was re-sampled, and you couldn't find anything to confirm that specific finding. But to me, if it's being found at all now, and it was found in 2005, 2006 by Barnstable Analytica, then isn't that maybe a clue that it might still be there? And maybe some further testing needs to be done about those carcinogens? Three of the four carcinogens were not tested according to the summary that I read today that Koneko has submitted to you as their summary of findings. So, I would think that it would be important to retest at least for those other three known carcinogens. And I guess my big question is, is if it's so clean, and maybe it is, where did it all go? Where is all of it? And shouldn't you have some documentation of where it is? I mean, wouldn't that be like a logical thing in a chain of, like, if I was doing an investigation of a murder or something, right? Wouldn't I want to know like where the dead body is? Like, there's all this stuff on file at the Board of Health that if you sat and read through, you'd come to the same conclusion that I, I have, that a lot has gone on there for many, many, many years. Why all of a sudden is it clean as a whistle? And I'm not saying that there's anything subversive going on, I'm just saying it definitely needs to, further investigation, because there are some real red flags. And I'm not a scientist. Brian's going to talk next and probably eliminate all of my concerns, but it just bothers me. I did make copies if you wanted them, because I know I'm saying a lot. Yeah, he sent it. So, this is for anybody else who wants it.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to talk about some of that?
Yeah, I'll just try and do a quick point by point. And, and this is sort of from a, at 3,000 feet. The concentrations of Rizzo detected in 1990 were primarily sort of low-level PCBs on the 1 to 3 parks per million range and total petroleum hydrocarbons. And back then, prior to 1993, this is 1990, the analysis they used back then was called the called 418.1. And it was a very, it was subject to a tremendous amount of interference. It was an optical enhancer analysis that would, would get confused with organic compounds and was always problematic in terms of false positives. Didn't mean yet, didn't have a problem with petroleum hydrocarbons. We use our, we use the same field determination now at Petroflag that sort of mirrors that analysis. However, in 1993, they changed the rule to be a compound-specific analysis by DP called EPH, and that's a much more advanced and, and, and sort of scientifically defensible test. When we ran our 20 samples, we went to the areas they found contamination, and we ran it for that extractable petroleum hydrocarbons, and we couldn't find the contamination. So, I don't have a clean answer in terms of where it's gone, other than to say that if you have a somewhat flawed analysis that's subject to organics interference, you have plenty on that site, maybe that, that could be part of the clues. Second of all, I can't defend every, the analysis that I do as a scientist. I go onto a site and I try and grid the site and see if I can find the problem. To us, we want to find the problem. So, we, I think we did a very good job in terms of the due diligence out there. It wasn't like we went out and did three borings out there. We've done an expensive study, and we couldn't find it. And nothing is better than opening up a soil and looking at the geostudigraphy to see if you have a problem or not. With respect to what was found in the former septic tank, that, that plasticizer, 2 bis exophalate, we did detect that at a very low concentration, but that's drinking water standards. You can drink it. And I always need, I need to be able to reproduce my data. We sampled it again, and it went away at such a low concentration. If it's blipped on the radar screen, that doesn't make a disposal site.
Why didn't you test for the other three?
I think we did, Mark, have you run an 827 analysis?
All that's reported in the tables that-
I'm sorry, this is Mark Roche, who's the project manager, also an analyst.
So, all of those are in that molecular table?
Not every, not every compound that we analyze is on these tables. Only compounds that were detected in at least one sample. So, there are many compounds that weren't detected in any samples, including those-
Oh, so they're all done.
We ran an 827 analysis, which is, and, and completely on all our test bits as well. Every groundwater monitoring well, every test bit was run for 827, which include these compounds.
I just want to jump in here for a second here. I don't want the paint, the picture to be painted that, you know, the planning board is, you know, is, it's all just about building homes or economic development. We have a long, as I said earlier, maybe I, maybe I wasn't succinct, we have a long history with this site. And, you know, in Easton, we have a great conservation commission. We have one of the, you know, strictest conservation bylaws in the state of Massachusetts, well, well beyond state regs. And, you know, Amy, you said something, you know, record-keeping isn't, isn't that great, is it? I, I once was working, when I was a kid, we worked to put a pool in, and we found 18 Civil War veterans buried in someone's backyard. So, what, you know, here, when I hear sludge in the septic system, I say, well, that's, that's in the tank, because I know, the planning board chairman says, well, I know, I've talked to the Board of Health, and the system was fine, and I'm going to look up this tomorrow. I swear there was a new system replaced. But, but sludge doesn't happen in the leaching field. If it does, then your, your field's not working, and the Board of Health's not going to give it an okay. It's in your tank. I know the tank was removed, so then I look at the applicants, and they've done testing, excuse me, in that area. Same thing for the site. You know, they're, name, name a building in this town that, name a house in this town in certain parts that aren't on old industrial sites. This is an old industrial town. And we can't, we'll never know everything that happened on the site, but it was probably 18 months, 24 months ago, Connor, myself, Stephanie, Rick, and then maybe you and Walter were in a meeting, and there had started to be a little bit of chatter online with this. And I said, you know, what, you know, what kind of testing, what, what do we know of this site? Because I always assumed, you know, I remember all the controversy I was under the street, and I remember all the airborne particulates, and I, I thought when it was, you know, closed down, it would have been, you know, gone through, you know, a strict program the state has. That's, that's above my pay grade. I don't, I don't get involved in that stuff. When we, we talked about it, we expressed some concerns with Rick, and, you know, on his own, we didn't even ask him until he came back, and that's when they showed the machine gun the site, went through it, and, or if I recall, he did about 200 test boards on the site. And, you know, came back, and then they found, what, one or two small oil releases. So, keeping in mind that I, I haven't found any records that there were underground storage tanks at the site. So, and, and clearly, this, this doesn't mess with me. We have, we have peer review, and we have, you know, many other professionals involved. But, just going forward with this, to me, you know, okay, it, it continued to pass a sniff test, you know, as, as the town of Easton's appointed a member of the planning board and voted by chair, this responsibility fell on me to, to move this thing forward to, to appoint, to bring it to a public presentation. And that's why tonight, you know, we're going through a transition here in town. Andrea has been working 80-hour days since, you know, and this, there are, there are what might be perceived as holes in this presentation tonight, but it was at the behest of it, and we said, let's, let's get going with this. We've been talking about it for a while. We knew there's myriad, myriad issues here. Better to, we like to do things publicly. I always hear, oh, you know, one, all these conspiracy theories. We do everything wide open in this town. We're, we're, you guys know, you've seen us at planning meetings, we're all about citizen input. And we've been talking about this project long enough, and with, you know, let's get the ball moving. And we had a, a big changeover, both in my board and in conservation. We hadn't done, you know, we hadn't done joint meetings for a few years, and we've talked about it. So, so, so we've sort of forced the issue here a little bit, but, you know what? I thought it was better, because, you know, at, on March 9th, a new planner starts, and he's got to get up to speed, so I thought it was, you know, good to get things going here. So, I just don't want to be perceived that this team came in unprepared. They came in at our request, and a project of this, so, it's not going to be done in one or two meetings, and there's going to, especially with multiple peer review and with, you know, a dozen or so, you know, highly skilled and passionate board members. We thought, you know, let's get going, and we knew there was going to be a lot of public input on this. This was an old, you know, this is an old foundry site. But, you know, I, I, I do think it's important to remember with all, you know, not, not playing, you know, not, not overlooking any concerns brought tonight, but this was passed, the, the potential for a project, this was passed unanimously at town meeting, and it wasn't slipped in, it was a long, we did dozens of public presentations. We, we did cable TV shows about it. We talked about how we wanted to bring in diversified housing for, for empty nesters or small families, how we want to, you know, retail is bricks and mortar is dead, are dead, you know? And so, let's, let's get some walkable neighborhoods. Let's, how can we attract, I know people always think about the schools, the demographics, the school count's going way down. We'd like to attract some young families back, back to the town. I, I think the one, they're all in the city now, but when they start having children, then a bunch are going to come this way. So, we tried to plan, we have to look at five, 10, 15, 20 years, but don't think for a minute that we don't have everybody, you know, we're all citizens of this town. I live a mile from this site. I'll die a mile from this site. Well, I'll die a mile away, I'll die away, living a mile from this site. And so, I just, you know what? There's, there's been a lot of, of hard work and diligence by, by everybody here, and a bunch of people that I don't even see, and that's going to continue. And, and I appreciate everybody's input tonight. I just don't want it to think, I just don't want to think that these guys didn't come in unprepared. They came in a little earlier than maybe they were thinking at, at our behest, and because we, we wanted to get, to get you folks. We wanted to get you heard, we wanted to get you involved, and, and hopefully, you know, we, we can all get educated. But there's, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to permit a project that, that's, that's unsafe, that has, you know, so, but, area, you know, until I hear different, I haven't heard anything that tells me that this site is not clean. And that's from multiple authorities. The state of Massachusetts approved it to be used as a staging area for the, for the construction of, of the sewer system. So, they, they don't take these things lightly, especially this day and age. Anyways, that's my, that's my, off my soapbox.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I add one comment to that? You're, you're correct. So, Mr. Lincoln, as part of his due diligence prior to buying the property, did his due diligence with respect to the environmental issues, got comfortable with it, went through the LSP, purchased the property. As I said earlier, we were meeting the town officials prior to that and after that. And in those meetings, as Greg just pointed out, they were sort of the ya-ba. Ya-ba, people are still saying. So, Mr. Lincoln went out and did another iteration of testing. He didn't stop there. He, he went back and had his LSP look at these documents that were on file, reached the same conclusion, the same comfort level. We then met with, in fact, he's going to speak right now, with a neighborhood group, and had a great meeting with a, a good group of citizens, probably larger than maybe twice as many as I hear tonight. And not surprisingly, a lot of what we heard that night was the ya-ba. Yeah, I know you're saying that, but I still think there's a problem. And Rick went out again with his LSPs and charged them with, hey, we're still hearing the ya-ba. Can you look at this again? And again, looked at this, and, and Rick's, he's doing a lot more than what is required, right, under the law, in terms of the environmental issues, but he's also doing what a good citizen does, what a good developer does, and that's show concern for those issues. So, it was a third time at the behest of the neighborhood, that specific neighborhood group, that he did this study again, reviewed the information again, and out of that came this report that Amy is referring to, the one that you guys have that was up here earlier. So, this has not been a situation where Mr. Lincoln has said, I did my due diligence, I met my requirements, I found nothing, I'm doing nothing else. He has continued to evolve and look at the information as groups of people have requested that he do, and he's here tonight in full disclosure, you have everything that he has. Maybe you have it in a summary form, but I don't think you'd want it any other way. And he's brought the two LSPs, LSPs that did all the work here so that you could hear the process and get a comfort level with them, and could address the concern. So, I just don't want that to get lost, that this was just a quick, hey, I did my thing and now I'm moving on. There's been a lot of time and a lot of money, and, and the money is not important, the time is what's important, spent to, to, to make everybody feel comfortable, most importantly, to make himself feel comfortable, because why would you buy a piece of land and buy a piece of land for cash, not paying financing? This is his money. And then buy a second piece of land and buy a second piece of land for cash with the intent of developing it for residential purposes, knowing that if there was the hint of a problem, you wouldn't be able to develop it? It makes no sense, right? So, I just want that to be clear, that there's been no secrets, there's been nothing hidden. All that he's done, he's, he's, it's come up in meetings with the town, and the town has asked for more information. He was happy to provide that information as the neighborhood group raised the concerns. We went back out and did it again. So, I just, again, I know I'm repeating myself, but I just think it's important that the extent of the work that has been done is known to everybody. It wasn't just a one-time go out there and be done with it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I guess just to, to build off that, I think, you know, the discussion that we're having right now shows the value of having this joint meeting, because this is the first joint meeting between our boards since I've been on the board. And there's been a lot of turnover, like you said, on both boards since then. And, you know, we may never get the full picture of the exact day-by-day history of this property. As Amy brought up, there's, you know, we have bits and pieces, and having your experts here has helped us fill in some of those holes and give us some perspective on some of it, which is, which is helpful, because I, I wouldn't have been able to tell you that there were different testing methods, and I mean, I guess you could presume that there were probably different testing methods, you know, almost 30 years ago, that threw up, you know, different results than you're going to get on more specific testing results today. So, I think we're all learning a lot of information today, and so, I know we're going to keep going, but thank you guys for bringing your experts in and helping us understand a little more. Sir?
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I live about 50 yards from the property, and I did want to thank Walter and Rick. Back in July, one of the other leaders of our Neighborhood Collaborative Group, which some of the planning board knows, we formed a group of about 175 members, which is both residents and businesses in the sewer district here, formed to address the sewer betterment issues and work collaboratively with the town. And on finding other issues that might have some impact on our members, we reached out and we met with Walter and Rick back in July over at the then Foundry Restaurant, and Walter and Rick offered to come to meet with our group. We had a meeting, I think it was the very end of August, beginning of September, over at the Knights of Columbus. We had about 40, 45 folks of our members. We had about 40, 45 folks of our members who came and were very appreciative to have the opportunity to learn more about the project and to ask questions directly of Walter and Rick, and I think it made a huge difference. Um, given our group represents both sort of business interests and residential, we wouldn't necessarily have unanimity on all issues on things, but I can say certainly from their perspective of the residential owners, um, folks are thrilled that, uh, there's a prospect of residential development on this property. Uh, we understand at some point in the past, there was some possibility of having Christmas tree shops and other things along those, or Christmas tree shop and other things along those lines. Our biggest fear for those, I've lived in that, that South Street since 1993, was that Route 106 becomes like another Route 1, a bunch of strip malls and so forth. So the idea of increasing the, uh, residential, uh, presence in the area is huge. And we are very hopeful of continuing to work with the town on, uh, working towards sidewalks and street lamps and bike paths and so forth. Um, I have two comments, uh, one of which is if somebody could speak to confirm whether as part of the plan, there in fact is a public access easement. Uh, one thing we want to make sure, given that this is going to be a private neighborhood association, that ultimately, given there's conservation land in the back, this is across the street from the Bay Circuit Trail, um, that there is actual access in the form of a public access easement, so the public always has it. It's important for our area to, to know that part of the neighborhood, not walled off and excluded. Um, second, on the issue about the, uh, monitoring. Um, first of all, back in July, when another of the, uh, our leaders, uh, we met with Walter and Rick, we suggested that it would be helpful to provide the actual testing data to the town. Um, we've made that request. I've had further follow-ups with Walter on that. I was thrilled to see today that in fact that information was provided and thank you them for that. On the monitoring issue, what might be helpful and give folks a little more comfort is rather than relying on an excavator to find something, is if there can be a little more active system of monitoring to make sure that, for example, in a particular area, whether it was where the septic area or otherwise, but that it's more proactive. Um, so if that can be addressed as well at some point in the, the board's respective deliberations. And, uh, and the first point, if somebody could just speak to the public access easement, I would appreciate that.
Whose idea was it? No, go ahead.
That is the plan. Um, that's probably down in the weeds a little bit, but, uh, I've done it before in other developments and that the intent is to, um, run an easement through the main entrance and then all the way around the west side to the end of the parking, so.
It's important for the folks in the neighborhood.
In fact, if you look at the, these, yeah, if you look at the cul-de-sac, uh, on the, on the west portion, there you go. Um, there's five or six parking spaces, including ADA parking. And the thought was, you know, I think of, we have four, what, over 4,000 acres of, of open space we've required in town and, uh, you know, the Bay Circuit Trails hair and to chide this into the town land, which has frontage on to, uh, Highland over by Royal and Throgo, and on that way out to the Cranberry Boggs or, or shoot up my way up to, uh, you know, Bear Hill and all that, all the way to Pecornicus, um, to help kind of stitch together the, the Emerald Necklace of, 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 of Easton. And so Rick, um, and his team, yeah, from the get-go, that was one of the first things we talked about. And that's what that whole, um, that's what you see the parking down there for.
I also want to point out, right here, there's parking. Is that intended to be guests or is that public? See right there?
Probably just like the other ones, going to be both. I mean, the access easement should cover the, you know, the entire travel wagon parking, so whatever is out there.
So you say a public access easement, it's going to, you're suggesting it'll be a public way with sidewalks on it?
No, it's a, it's an actual, uh, it's an easement.
The way will be owned by the homeowners association. Uh, the homeowners association will maintain the road. It's supposed to be private and the town will be granted an easement for access purposes so we can work out the language and the condition and probably subject to town council review, I would think, that, um, recognizes that the idea of that pathway in those parking spaces is to provide the ability for members of the public to come onto the private way and get out through this privately owned land onto the publicly owned land that's owned by the town and care and custody of the commission.
Yeah, maybe there was even talk at one point of maybe some interpretive signage out there, you know, along, both along the path, you know, and in that area, just.
It's no different than what we do, um, sort of in the old days, 10 years ago, with private ways, um, under the old OSRD where with the developer would have a homeowners association own the road, but would give, um, the town and the town water department an easement over the right of way to own the water system and maintain the water system. In this case, it's not the water system, it's access. So it's not, it's not unusual. It's actually quite simple.
For a lawyer.
For a lawyer. Do it for a bad lawyer, what you mean.
Any, uh, anyone else from the public or any comments, questions?
Hello, Heidi Smith, Pento, 63 Highland Street.
I'm sorry?
Heidi Smith, Pento, 63 Highland Street. Um, I have a bunch of questions, so I have to pick my favorite. So online, when you look at the application for this development, there are four pictures of, there are four maps of this area and three of them look pretty similar and one of them does not. And I'm wondering which one is accurate. So there is a USGS map and there's an Alec map and an Ariel map and another map. The USGS map does not look like the other maps in terms of where this property is in comparison to Highland Street at least. So I wanted to get a clear picture. And none of these pictures seem to show neighboring properties.
Should we go to the covers?
Is that the NOI?
Oh, go to the cover.
The cover is a pretty, is a.
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
Yeah, I don't know.
You, you have those.
Just about the NOI application, where it has like the GIS, all the different like overlays, the pull downs from the state maps.
Yeah, do you want the notice of intent? Does that help? Can you, can, can we talk at?
Are, are you talking about the, uh, planning file or the conservation file? Do you know?
It's, um, I think it's the planning file, I'm not entirely sure. It has like a light blue.
So if you see that the project's in red and then traveling sort of left, left to right below it, right where the cursor is, that's Highland.
Can we zoom in a little?
But on the USGS map, that property looks much bigger and closer to Highland Street than this picture would lead you to believe. So I'm not, I'm wondering which map is correct.
The distance, the distance to Highland Street is more than a few.
Yeah, the, the.
But the other map shows it right.
USGS map.
The boundary's not correct on the USGS map.
Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely not.
It's about twice as big as it should be.
It's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the land in between is conservation.
Yeah.
Owned by the town.
So I'm, I'm in that bend in the road right there, so.
Yes, you're not going to get swallowed up by the project.
Okay, great. Um, can I ask another question since?
You were correct with the mapping off, so go right ahead.
Okay. So I'm wondering if there's any talk of privacy fencing or, or like nighttime light pollution? Is that the solar report that you were talking about or?
No, typically we'll do like a photogrammetric by the lighting companies, which gets reviewed by the, the board of boards. Um, typically on this one, we shouldn't have much problem except, you know, maybe on the east side and we have stuff like that. Altamore towards Follards, you know, four feet high and, you know, everything, just trying to keep the light down. It's like a little, you ever seen the little skinny post going into like commercial offices and stuff? It's, it's a nicer way to do the lighting. It's not perfect for street lighting, but it does cut down on light pollution, so. And if there's an instance with a house, we'll put a baffle on the back and, but that's all part of the lighting analysis.
Yeah, so our, our bylaws don't allow, excuse me, a property that's being developed to have a light spillover, light pollution, you know, more than one foot candle, which is very, very dim, uh, for, so we'll see that plan. So there won't, you won't, won't be an issue with Highland. As Rick says, the closest place we'll have to take a look and make sure it adheres would be over to a South Street on the, on the eastern end, but.
And fencing?
If there's any fencing, is it where it's, uh?
Yeah, I tend to try and avoid it when I can. I like to use vegetation, you know, instead of a sterile looking white PVC fence. And I don't really think, again, might be over there on that east side, um, if there's any fencing anywhere, but the rest would be all vegetated or, you know, existing rougher.
What if we wanted fencing? Is that a possibility if that's something need brings?
Probably have to see the reason for it and where and, you know, what it would look like, so, um, we'll, I'll come in with the rendering. It's true from the landscape architect, this was just like a first, kind of a 2D look at it, so.
And just FYI, you know, of course, this is with my very official finger scale there, but one inch, one inch equals a thousand feet. That's how we came up with the inch, right, the first digit. So I'm, I'm going to guess, going by the locust, you know, it's, it's 650 to 700 feet away from Highland Street, seems to be close to 400. And that's pretty, pretty fully wooded, right?
You know, and I, and I think, you know, um, I, I think also from a conservation standpoint and the wildlife, we're trying to minimize wildlife impact, fences are generally something we have to have a reason to put them in. Um, and so it would not be our first choice in generally, uh, up against the buffer zone, so.
Yeah, and, and in that particular area, that would be a more sensitive area, uh, from the homeowners' perspective.
It's not that we wouldn't rule them out entirely, it's just it, it wouldn't come up as a primary, um, protection unless it was a specific reason we were trying to do it.
Okay. Um, where will trash be kept?
To be determined.
Okay.
There, there will be a central area.
Like a dumpster?
Right.
So I'm just curious, so you were talking about traffic light earlier to, to float tra- so when I was at the town meeting for, um, the detour onto Highland Street, I asked about a traffic light. We have traffic lights at the end of Highland, so, and I was told that we would need warrants. Why is it so easy for this development to get a traffic light when the traffic lights at the, at either end of Highland are quite effective and it would be great to keep them?
Well, this, you know, this isn't in lieu of, these, this is, you know, they're mutually exclusive. This isn't in lieu of any license Highland Street that, I don't want to speak to the sewer project because I'm not involved in that.
Wouldn't this development need warrants in order to do that as well?
No. No, it would be part of, of the, right? I, I don't think so.
The reason that it's easier, and I don't know what we're comparing it to, because I agree, I don't know what the deal is.
There are temporary lights at the end. Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not.
Oh, yeah, but funding, yeah, that's why I'm like, I'm trying to think why it would be a town.
It's not funded program, that's when Rick mentioned earlier that the long-term plan for the town, five to 10 years out, is through tip funding and other programs where the state and the federal government will come in and they'll dictate the layout and all of those things. And that's when, you know, ugly things like takings start to be talked about and, well, that becomes a very difficult process. Um, that's not happening here, he's paying for it.
And, and all the land for the, for the turning lanes on it's, it's coming out of this property.
There's no takings, there's no proposed impact on anybody else's land that would use the right way in this property.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
So anybody else? All right, well, um, thank you all, you know, it's, uh, it's important. You're, you're all part of the process. We're, we're glad you came and I hope you continue to come. So we all, all good? So I know we had talked, do we have to continue this, obviously? Um, normally we'd go up maybe two weeks, start next week, but talk to a little bit more work, but that has to be done. So why don't we, for now, you want to go, want to go a month out and then?
Are we going to do another joint meeting, is that plan?
Are we doing another joint meeting?
It's your choice. I, I got you here.
At some point, I mean, this is a, you know, typical, sometimes in the past, we kind of, in the past, we have, um, we've sometimes just done a joint, at the start and then.
Maybe while we iron out some of the details, we hold that separately and then we circle back?
Yeah. I would think from a planning board standpoint, I'd like to continue this for a month. Uh, and if you have to extend, that's fine. And folks, it, to, best way to stay up to date is to either go onto the town's website and you go to the planning board, um, page and you can look at the agenda or you can call, uh, you can call in. It's, it'll be scheduled, it may be canceled or, I mean, maybe continued, but we would know that, you know, a week or so ahead of time. So just check online or, or call in. Got it?
You can go to minutes on demand and you can schedule to be notified anytime there's an agenda.
Really? Didn't know that. Look at that.
Good answer.
Thank you. You get a bonus question, though. So, um, so planning, so planning board, um, I want to make a motion to continue out to our.
March 16th.
Sure. Motion to continue to March 16th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
March 23rd? You guys have time to answer? Brian, I would give you more time.
Putting mud boards and lights now over here, but what's the next dates?
Uh, March 23rd, equal a month? Uh, all right, so motion to continue, uh, that was 560 Foundry to, uh, March 23rd. All in favor? All right.
Can I, um, can I ask that the peer reviewers and myself be available to meet in the meantime with the project team?
Yeah.
Great. Make the motion, Stefan?
Second.
Planning board, do not run anywhere, we got a lot of work to do.
Uh, do we need to adjourn our section of the meeting, are we asking?
Yeah.
Anybody want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn Conservation Commission.
Uh, second?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Seconded by.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Seconded by Michael.
Land board, 500 reasons.
Can I, can I keep you on short?
Um, I am giving, I am giving the, the next version to Judy. And on Wednesday tomorrow, and so I'm saying every, this is, this is everything that they, they hope to achieve. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get out of tonight. A map, a name, and everything you're trying to achieve.
So just so we're clear, we're gonna vote tonight to, we're gonna vote tonight to create some warrant articles that we use to place holders on.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, and so. Here are. Oh, so, alright. So I have, I have some questions because as we know, this has not been. The easiest of processes. So, right now. You know, when you read the bylaw, it talks about, and this is for the two commercial districts, talks about. Everything twenty-five thousand square feet and over, and that's in Florida, that's what's talking about the building, is a major. Development. But, the thing is, it's certainly possible to have major size of it, but what else? That, that's a pretty large building.
Especially for other.
And, so anything other, so right now, as I understand this, the way this is written, that it's, okay, it's, it's current zoning. Or, uh, if you are twenty-five thousand square feet or over, then all of the. All the dimensions, uh, come into play, so that seems to be, it seems to be a big, a big hole there. And, again, I, I don't really. You know, was there supposed to be a minor development that, you know? And how do we, um, you know, I mean, if we just go right through it, you know, it says, uh, all, all. All developments in five corners districts shall be subject to site plan approval, uh, yada, yada, okay. And it talks about we can do design, um, you know, we, we can do a design standards, okay. But, then, the D, density and dimensional requirements. Number one depot in Eastman Street subdistricts for purposes of section nine point seven.
She, she didn't catch a lot, no, no, I, but I, I caught that one, thank you.
Um, oh, yeah, I mean, they're all through here. A five, a five corners major development should be any development involving twenty-five thousand square feet or more. And then, after that says, four or five corners major development, only, the following provision sell supersede appendix B. If I'm not mistaken, appendix B is our.
Dimensions.
Dimensional table in, in, in our regular bylaw. So, talks about forty thousand square feet, hundred and fifty, uh, you know, so it spells out all that stuff, and then it gets into all of the. You know, the dwelling units, you know, the, it gets into the table, everything to the middle, the next, the middle of the next page. But, so, what happens to all of the smaller, so, is there no way for, for mixed use? Or residential on, on any of the, you know, on, on the other lots, I mean, there's a few lots that, when you work out the dimensions here. Uh, it might not even be possible to get to twenty-five thousand. And, um, so that's, that's number one, and then, and residential. Um, and I, I gave, this kind of occurred to me after the night I, I went to a neighborhood meeting that Dale and. And the neighbors had invited me too, and, um, had a good two and a half hour discussion. And there's. So, right now, you know, in this case, remember one, one of the meetings we told Judy, okay, maybe quarter acre zoning-ish, you know? You know, that's, that's where the four, uh, the one dwelling unit per, per ten thousand square feet. So, dwelling unit, and this is not defined, so I'm assuming dwelling unit means apartment or condo, or, or, you know, single family detached? And if it's the latter, uh, or, or maybe it's duplex, but if it's the latter. What are the lot? Requirements, frontage, uh, depth, are there any, or is this, are we gonna handle this? Maybe this is where we do, you know, a, a special permit, I was thinking about it, maybe, you know, maybe we. You know, we were kind of going back and forth on special permit and by right, and I was looking how we did the, um. Queens at Commercial District. And, you know, and there you can get, and, and another thing, I know I'm jumping around, but I'm just getting this all out of the table. We, we haven't addressed affordability and mitigation. Uh, for example, in the, uh, Queens Commercial District, you know, think of Ed Walsh's project. By right, you could do four, I believe it was four units per acre, or you could double that if you. Uh, went with twenty percent, you know, affordable for the mass standard, so the whole project would come against, um. Our S H I number, now, of course, that was apartments, so that was, that was a little different, that was, weren't different, that was just strictly apartments there, it wasn't an option for, you know, a single family or detached or condo. And then, in council, this may be a question for you, so, so mitigation, whether, or, you know, we, we kind of have the, we've had in the past. And we had this on the Foundry project, we had the ability to either go with an affordable unit or, or mitigation, and we chose the latter. Can we do that outside of the special permit process?
I don't see why not.
You just make it part of the.
You would just have to, I, I, yeah, you would just identify it.
Do you note, do you note it in the bylaw?
I think you certainly could.
I, do you have to? I mean, put you on the spot, I.
Do you have to, that's a.
But it doesn't have to be a special permit.
I don't believe so.
So, um, where's, yeah, so where's affordability component, mitigation, uh, resi should be, okay, maybe resi should be special permit, just so we give that extra. Yeah, because it was such a small little area, I'm, I'm talking the residential district, let me say that, and then, um, and the mitigation, so those are my. Those are my main ones, and then. You know, my last, we, we came up with, thinking about that residential district in the middle, and there was a little. There were, there were, you know, a couple folks at the neighborhood meeting I went to that were concerned. In the residential district, and we've heard it here a couple times, people said, well, maybe we should just drop that off and do it later, and I, I still think it works better if we do it all continuously. Uh, so that they can all get the, the potential benefits, but then my thought is, okay, well, we said, you know, we just said quarter acre that night, but then I went back and I started looking at the site plan. Because again, we're talking in total of like eleven lots. And, you know, there's one, one point one acre, one point three acres, roughly what they are, so then I was like, well, do we change it? Do we go to maybe just two or three, maybe, you know, if, if they're getting, uh, if, if folks are skittish. And it's getting, you know, more dense than they would like, the potential for more density. So, so that's, that's where my bringing is at. And. You know, like, so are we doing, in, in these districts? And I remember I asked Judy this last time, but it didn't get answered, so go back, go back to the two commercial districts, right? So it talks about maximum, you know, it talks about height and maximum floor, and you know, that, you know. Then it talks about a commercial building, talks about a mixed use building, and in here, uh, there's a. Bear with me. Okay, the, so this is on, uh, E, this is kind of strange how this is on numbered too.
Yeah, that, that's one of the things that I'm gonna.
E one, right, the planning and zoning board may grant a special permit. Sorry, boss, no, that's, she wrote it, not me. May grant a special permit for multifamily dwellings in a five corner major development, provided they are on the same lot. And situated behind a commercial or mixed use building that conforms to the requirements of this section nine point seven. So. Wha- what's everybody's, so, in these commercial districts, are we allowing buildings that are just residential? Or does everything, or was the thought that everything had to have a mixed use component?
In the commercial area.
In the commercial, in the two commercial areas, yeah. No, and, um.
Well, we definitely talked about, like, trying to incentivize, like, commercial, but I guess we didn't really talk about excluding just residential.
Well, we talked about, we talked about incentivizing the historical for, for, for residential.
Yeah. Yeah.
But then, I guess I kind of thought, I thought this, we're always kind of talking, I mean, may. I thought, I thought we were always talking that everything would have a mixed use element to it.
Right, that's what we were trying to incentivize.
I thought, but then, but that doesn't say it here, or, or it says, it says it a little bit, but, but like, to that, that paragraph I just read. If it's commercial or mixed use, but we're, other than that one little. It's not even, I mean, it's, it's just not delineated.
So is your question, is your question, can we have a strictly residential use in Eastman Street and Depot Street subdistricts?
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't say can we, I'm, I said, do we want, you know, and I don't, I mean, I don't know, I guess in some, you know. I, when, because all the times that I thought of strictly residential, it was more in, in the residential areas, whether it was. You know, small, compact neighborhood, or, or, you know, apartments in a historical building, et cetera. But, regardless of which it is, there's nothing, there's just no, this doesn't tell me which it is at all.
So, I, I'm, I'm kind of confused as to what we're getting hung up on here. I mean, I guess, I guess the way I had thought the conversation went before is that we're trying to make walkable neighborhoods. And so, that special permit provision, I, you know, I don't remember the specific conversation. But the sentiment may have been somewhere along the lines of what happened over at that Coria's Plaza. You know, kind of putting some things up closer to the street, and then, you know, maybe hiding some residential in the back. I, I can't remember, that, that may have been.
But she touches, it was, but see, you know what it is, I think it's just kind of incomplete, like that.
You might be right, yeah.
That sentence, that one I talked about, fits that, it says, okay, you can have a detached, you know, you can have an exclusive residential building on the same lot as a mixed use or commercial building. But, so that, that I get, but my question, we're, how are we defining? Or is defined, you know, where, is everything else, you know, if, if, if there's a, if there's a residential element to a project. Is it required to have, other than that standalone unit that's on the lot within another building, is it required to have a mixed use component? This doesn't say whether it is or not, so the question is, do we think it should? And, and then, and, and then regardless, how do we define mixed use and, and how it should be done? Because it doesn't, you know, there's no.
I got on table, uh, part four uses, five corners, Depot, Eastman. Says multifamily dwelling.
Yeah, on the building regulations table?
Yeah. Part four, then appendix A.
On the use regulations table.
What page?
I don't know, it's not numbered.
Part four.
Part four.
Oh, okay.
It's like above, uh.
Keep going, Greg.
Keep going. Keep going.
Oh, you're way back in this, from here.
Yeah, appendix A.
And then it, it breaks out multifamily dwellings.
Right, okay, so.
So are you saying we want that just to be a why instead of a yes?
Or, or a, a no, it sounded more like.
No, 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 we want it, we want it allowed, I guess, um. So it says, alright, so, okay, so see, this says it a little differently, so multifamily dwelling is allowed, to, to me, multifamily dwelling doesn't have a mixed use component. That's allowed by a special permit, that's what she's saying.
Right.
So we're pushing towards, okay, so it's just in kind of a weird space, please.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah, you have.
It's a doing back here.
Yeah, you have some reference back here.
So I, I look a little stupid, I know, but I.
No, no, no.
I was kind of looking to the foot, because that's where I thought all the residential stuff was.
But the, but the point is, you need to clarify in the front, in, at E one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would probably be good if it was a little bit more explicitly stated, or if it at least made reference.
Well, if it was not, if it didn't have all this text in between.
Yeah.
Oh, but all the tables, they're, they're used tables, they should all dimension, they should all be together.
Right.
Well, those are actually gonna be, aren't, aren't these things, these things, um, are gonna get absorbed into appendix A in the zoning. They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be sitting together, once it's adopted.
Right, 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 yeah, exactly. But, yeah, I was gonna have a snide comment, I should.
Yeah, it's a lot of work on our part, we'll do it.
Yeah. Lucky, lucky you, huh? Alright, so, alright, so let's, so, so let's stay on this, the, the, so we're all good with these uses, the way they follow? Five corners residential.
I'm sorry, you have this too, though.
I was slightly confused.
I mean, I guess we're gonna get, we got rid of the mixed use a while ago in the residential, right? And I'm trying to jump on, sorry, Dad, I'm gonna catch up.
That's fine. I, I think we talked about it before, but I, I was still slightly confused when I read the space for manufacturing, assembly, or packaging, consumer goods, provided that blah, blah, blah. It's on the second part of that uses table, and then it says, no in commercial frontage zone. So it's allowed, is that the space we're talking about as being like the maker space, that's how we were?
Yeah, what is that, commercial frontage zone?
No, in commercial frontage zone, was that, maybe that's a survivor of the first, remember at first she had two zones, she had transitional zone. Wait, remember the first version talked about the properties that were abutted the street, and then the properties that didn't, but there were, really weren't any that didn't? I think that's probably a survivor of that.
So, so, yeah, so I don't know, are we just saying we are allowing it then in the non-residential? And then, I think we had alluded to that definition as, yeah, being like a maker space.
Sure.
But. I was trying to think of what other things could fit that definition that maybe wouldn't be desirable.
Well, we had interesting, we had an example that came out, a real life example that came up here in town this year. An existing, uh, strip mall, I'll call it that, plaza, um, had a couple vacant spaces in it. And, there was a proposal to take this space and use it as a warehouse, basically. To store, um, clothing from, um, from a, a, another business, a, sort of an online business that was located somewhere else. So I remember Stephanie, you know, she, she talked about, she goes, well, you know, and she got hung up on the, on the fifty percent. Because they were gonna set up a, a, a small little retail, like the site, but it was mostly gonna be, be a warehouse. But, wasn't, wasn't really a terrible use, and that building had, wasn't really gonna add anymore trucks in, that the property was getting already, you know, to the rear, to the loading zone, but. But that's, I guess, thinking about this, this is a small district, right, we're not, we're trying not to. We just, you know, we'd rather, we'd rather beautify and not have a big industrial use there.
Right.
Because we don't really have, I mean, there's not a lot of large sites, but, doesn't mean, I mean, do we do something like that by a special permit? You know, for when you get that, that, uh, you know, that non-anticipated or unanticipated scenario, that would be okay, but we could never.
Right, like a small little.
I mean, I, I think, I think if, if it's just straight, I guess I'm a little bit confused with the reference to just straight commercial building as well now. And, um, because I, I. I agree with you, if, if it's just a commercial use, I think the spirit of it, and what we've all talked about, is we don't, we want this to be a walkable neighborhood, we don't want this. Your, your, your famous example came up tonight, to be Route One in Attleboro. And so, I, I think that.
I knew you had family in Attleboro.
But, but I think we're all on the same page there, and so that maybe needs to be revised or clarified. That, you know, we're not just talking about, you know, another strip mall, or whatever, in that particular area.
Yeah.
Is anyone else confused by the reference over here to just straight commercial building?
I'm assuming that just means no residential, because she has multi, um, mixed use right there. I mean, that's, I don't know, that's a description, right?
Well, I guess if that's the case, then, yeah, I, if I were to put my lawyer hat on, I would say that that's allowed, and if that's the case, then we do wanna put some additional restrictions on the use, is one of the signs. So I'm, I'm in agreement, I think we're all on the same page there.
And just a sort of side, side note here, so Andrea, so to, so we meet, I know you, so we are meeting, our public hearing is the eighteenth, sixteenth, right?
Sixteenth.
And we have one more meeting.
On the third.
This board before then, so. We can still, and, and we, and we can even tweak things that we have done the night of the sixteenth. We can have an additional, so we still have, you know, we're, we're kind of taking this over now, because we have to, right? We, so, we want to zero in, but we still have a little time to find tuning anyways.
Right, but, um, but everything, you know, everything that you're saying tonight, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to get into this next version.
Sure, sure.
So, um, you are all, you, you're, you're, you are interested in having residential? As, as a component of mixed use? Not necessarily residential on its own? In the Eastman and Depot Street? It's a component of mixed use.
Right, I think ideally we'd want mixed use, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So do we need to define outside, we need to define what that's going to be?
It's a single, it's just, yeah, well, even, even just that simple statement will allow it to be read better.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
But then, but, um, but in the requirements for the buildings, um, a commercial building, a mixed use building. Should there be another line that says residential in mixed use?
Or, or can that be considered mixed use?
But isn't that what mixed use is?
Is that what mixed use is?
Yeah, I think that's probably.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's covered in our definitions, you know, mix.
So no, no strictly residential, but yes residential as part of mixed use?
My gosh, there are questions.
Just confirming, so if you're on Depot or the Eastman District, you can't just have like four duplexes? You have to have, as well, commercial plans?
Let me get back to that second, just so, so right now, our definition of mixed use, a development that includes primarily non-residential and primary residential uses on the same street. Did you say in which district? Eastern, in Depot.
Currently, you wouldn't be able to have only residential.
Right, under what we just said, I mean, of course, your, your, your grandfather, not your first one.
Yeah.
But not your second, but, um. I mean, there, you know, there's.
Because we need to decide if solely residential will help the development, like if allowing solely residential will help the development.
Well, it's interesting, if you look, okay, let's say, like, just a little history for some of our new members, right? So Mr. Heiko, might I use you as an example? So Ray, here, this little tiny lot? That, we permitted that a couple years ago for special permit for duplex. And he came and you extended it this year, right, a couple, couple more years?
Yeah.
And he owns, don't put your pants on. Then this lot, he also owns, and, and we met, Stephanie and I, and Michael met, kicked around a couple ideas. Uh, so these are the lots that the trees have recently, recently cleared right in front of the condo, so the side of Shaw's. So, it's like, okay, um, so in, it's interesting, because that's sort of in that. You know, it goes back to what we, you know, that is, that area starts as a residential area, and it's transitioning in.
So we could.
So, uh, you know, if, if someone put. Some, uh, you know, residential duplex there, you know, or, or, you know, exclusively residential project, and the one hand, you say, well, it fits in. If walkable neighborhoods, more residences, and it, it transitions nicely, because we're in a, in a butts.
Right.
Margin home. But you might not, but you might not say that about, you know, a, a, a further, well, yeah, or just, you know, further up, you know, another parcel.
Right.
How do you? How do you differentiate between them? Would, because this site plan review give us enough, doesn't give us enough to do that, does it?
No, I think we would have to add another provision in there that allows for it under a special permit, just another line.
Right.
Oh, so do, do exclusive residential as special permit?
Yep.
Right.
See, you're coming around.
Hey, I told you, I'm fine with it on that.
On that nature.
Man, this is weird, knocking this down tonight, my goodness.
Is that exclusive residential in just Depot Street or both?
I would say both.
Okay, okay.
My, we're scheduled by special permit, we're covered by special permit.
I, I think by both.
Yeah, so.
That we control the transitions.
Well, we don't know what will.
Well, and it lets us, it, it, it's, because this is really gonna come down to a parcel by parcel as it gets going, you know, no one's gonna come and buy any of these parcels.
Well, yeah.
How?
In that, in, in particular, what do we call it, furnace, furnace building?
Well, furnace building. Zoning district, you guys on, around that, right?
I, I went to the mentor and the name changed, I still don't know what happened, so, never again, never again.
What happened?
How many, in the, in the five corners area, how many parcels over there were we looking at that were more than an acre? There were, there were, there are few, right?
Yeah, now, do you mean red, the intersection?
Yeah, in that, in that.
So right here.
Depot Street Subdistrict.
So.
I mean, it's a good one. Okay. It's actually more than I remembered when you went through and did your slide presentation, is there most, mostly in that area?
So, alright, so, so we get the mixed use, we get the strictly residential, in, in the commercial areas. That's good, um.
I kind of think that we should maybe make the, uh, to go back to what you were, you were saying in this whole conversation about the, uh, fifty percent. The space for manufacturing right now is yes, and that it was N in a commercial zone, like, yes, does it make sense to maybe have it be by special permit? Because we don't know what that manufacturing or retail component is as opposed to right now, it's just yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I was trying to say, because you can't, especially if things are changing, you can't really anticipate every use. And what this gentleman was, was, um, proposing at that existing building wasn't, it wasn't bad, it was just, it was kind of. So it might be nice to have some flexibility, instead of a hard no. Because we certainly don't wanna.
We have a hard yes.
Hmm?
We have a hard yes.
We have a hard yes right now.
Right, or, yeah, or, yeah, so.
Yeah, so I, I would be in favor of that.
So special permit on that one.
So you're at the, the manufacturing, change yes to, but P C D.
Well, let's, I'm just trying to think about what, so what, what is the concern that we're. That we're trying to address there, originally, when I looked at it quickly, I just saw manufacturing, and then I started to get nervous, but now I'm looking at it in more detail, and I'm, I'm less concerned about it.
The full definition is in, um, appendix A, which we, which we spelled, we, we attached.
I think that, I just think it's a thing that sort of protects us a little bit there, is that whatever's being manufactured, at least fifty percent of it's.
Sold.
Sold at.
Was sold, right.
And then there's.
That's gonna limit in the type.
Yeah, it's gonna limit the type of manufacturing we're talking about.
And then it goes on and says twenty-five percent is retail.
It's just that, like, depending on what type of. Depending on what type of manufacturing, or what it is specifically. It's a tire, like.
Or whatever.
Tire manufacturing, you're gonna sell fifty percent of the tires out front.
And how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you confirm it? You know, what you think about it?
Well, it's a good, it's a good question. That's, those are both good questions, but I, with the tire one, I just don't see how.
You'd be able to do that.
From a practical perspective. That's a, you'd need a big facility.
Right, generally, you think of manufacturing, you need a lot of space where none of these.
Here, we're talking about like.
Or you even think about, um, Peloton gets relocated.
Not the making birdhouses.
In this.
Birdhouses, woodworking.
Someone brought the craft there.
Right.
There's all makers. I mean, I can see it working for that, like tires.
Well, that's what I'm kind of getting at, it, it almost, it almost encourages the, the, kind of the makers movement is what I'm, is what I'm suggesting.
I think it's probably the scary, probably the scary stuff, which is kind of what we, what you think, you know, what, what's gonna fill these spaces?
It's a good.
Right, yeah, so, so, you know, co, you know, shared workspaces, I think we'll float out this way, we talked about that before, little studios.
Well, we want that, but I'm just saying, what things can we think of that maybe we wouldn't want, but that would then be allowed, that could maybe really be harmful to the impact of, say, a bunch of mixed use with residential components right around it that aren't, and, you know, think about, you know, it doesn't have to be its own, like, what if, it's, it's not just a one-man business? What if there's other manufacturing companies located elsewhere, and we're talking about, like, trucks maybe coming in and out to? I'm just saying, I.
No, I'm not saying, I, I just, I mean, keep, we're protected a little bit with, with noise ordinances and with, you know, even smell ordinance. And would you, you wouldn't know until you reclassify the zoning, but. And, and then in some ways, I mean, you, you would, the trucks, if we're talking small lots, in some way it's almost self-beliefing, it's not gonna be.
I mean, I just, I wonder, maybe we should throw this out as a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
And, and we should, we should, yes, they have this concern, is there a different way to limit it, other than just by this fifty percent language?
The, the, the actual definition is further limited? Uh, when you look at the full, when you look at the, the back of the term four, is the full appendix A? There it is, and so on, is it attached with one dash five, you're at one dash nine, look at one dash five. And there's the full definition. Space for manufacturing, assembly, or packaging of consumer goods, provided that at least fifty percent of the merchandise is sold, blah, 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 and further provided that not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area is devoted to manufacturing, assembly, or packaging of consumer goods, and not more than five persons are employed at one time for manufacturing, assembly, or packaging.
I mean, yeah, I agree, I think that that makes it a little bit more limiting, but I wouldn't mind just throwing it out to Judy and just.
So I just thought of, of one. So I, I work at, or I work right across the street from Fish Pier, I park on Fish Pier, and there is a company that makes dog bones out of the fish.
That was in the good.
A lot of them.
Horrifying smell. I always tell people, like, the worst smelling parking space in Boston, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look through this, I'm not sure I see that that type of a thing would be limited.
Yeah, so in fact, it's a small business, and it would probably be encouraged.
Let's not tell them about it.
Well, let's, yeah, let's throw it to a nice, you know, we can digest that, too, so here, so here's, I want to jump for a second, so, it makes you, or read strictly residential, right, in, in the two districts, two commercial districts. So what we did in the cohesive commercial district, I can read this, with the world's smallest font. We, there was a, there was a, it's two or three.
Now you're in B, the appendix B?
I, I'm in the old, I'm in the, our existing, but I'm just looking at how. Oh, you know what? All right, here, I'm on, well, I'm in the bio, so you get some. So just existing in the multi, multi-family, police commercial district number two, right, so here's, here's a hard font, so, this is what we did last year. Multi-family may be allowed in recent commercial districts, save for following conditions, multi-family units must be part of a mixed-use project, the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in the district shall be no more than four units per developable acre. The maximum number of bedrooms shall be no more than three, a bonus allowing up to eight rental dwelling units per acre is provided where twenty-five percent of such units shall be restricted to occupied by house, restricted to occupied by households earning at or below the SHI, that's largely affordable, the eighty percent. So, because we're, we're, don't forget, as we're adding residential units, there's, you know, pushing the town to add small A affordable units, and on a larger scale to, to add to our SHI. So that was sort of, so that was incentive there.
I think that's another reason to, to maybe bump up the numbers in Depot Street subdivision, because that becomes a big factor as well when it comes to developers looking at it, if you want to incorporate that, and I'm generally in favor.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure, like, I think, I think, it's a, I think it's a must I need to catch up, I think we, I think we need to do that at Eastman.
Certainly.
Depot was just, Depot was trickier, because some of them are smaller, and we just, I want to make sure we don't freak people out with density, I mean, you know.
And I, you know, I, I keep thinking about that, and I'm just, you know, that area, the, the gas stations there, the strip malls, and Shaw's, I mean, wouldn't, I just, I have to think that people would welcome, you know, some, some decent-looking mixed-use buildings. Even with some scale to them, and I'm not talking about the size of, you know, the Avalon project or anything like that, but I gotta think that it would be a welcome change.
I think it can be, I think people, my experience in all these years, you know, people are, change is difficult for people, and, you know, like, for example, the other night, at the public meeting, that we did, neighborhood meeting, you know, we, we sit here and we think of, and I'm guilty of this, I think of the, you know, the, the project we're looking at tonight, I look at that as being a positive and benefit to this town, I look at the fact that sewer went through here, now I understand, you know, the pain of veterans, but I also say, okay, town worked hard, they really got that down. I say, boy, you know, I'm, when I go to sell my house, I gotta put in a forty thousand dollar septic system, I'd love to be on, you know, on a, you know, on a sewer system where I'm, yeah, I'm, my, my, my keys lock it, but that's me, you know, but. You know, so I heard a couple of times, you said, all this change, and, you know, for me, like, well, it's really never changed, but, but they're living there, I mean, like, you know, so I just trying to, trying to, you know, and zoning needs to pass two-thirds of town meetings, so I'm always, you know, wanna, I want to get, you know, so I'm just trying to balance everything in my head, so, okay, what, what, what is a good? So, we're on the same page, I hear you saying, I just, you know.
Well, I think the messaging is certainly gonna be important, I think, yeah, we brought it up last, last meeting, but I just, in order for that area to change to what kind of everybody, I think, wants, I think everybody's on the same page with the walkable neighborhoods. But in order for that to happen, there's gotta be appropriate scale that's allowed in that area.
I thought at last meeting that you all had come to some consensus around the development, the Depot Street would have the density of one dwelling unit per five thousand?
Correct. Yeah, right here on this slate, it still says ten thousand.
It still says ten, yeah.
Yeah, that's the old one.
So we're done, we're, we're.
Yeah, but, and then my question, so, so that's, that's eight units per acre, basically, but we haven't addressed.
Affordable.
Affordability, so we're gonna, you know, and we don't have to, we don't have to determine that right now, but it's something to think about, because I think there's.
There's a maximum of ten.
I know there'll be, that'll be on the minds of some of the leaders in this town, and, and it's just, you know, something we normally have talked about sooner, but just, we sort of have a hybrid process here, so we're kind of coming up to it now, but, we don't need to decide right now, but that's just something, you know, we need to think about and, you know, maybe drill down on how to figure out it on our next meeting.
Did we, I thought last meeting did, was that a parcel in the residential section that didn't get a sewer?
Right.
Was that eliminated for that, primarily for that reason?
That, yeah, that was eliminated because, yeah, the, the neighbor, I mean, I, I, when we first talked, I mean, I did with that, I mean, that sixty-acre house, that was, that was, that would be sixty-four units, because when you think of a compact neighborhood or flexible development, there's an open space component in there, but that really seemed to be something opposed by the neighbors, and I, you know, so I, I thought, you know, I thought it was, you know, why don't we, it is in that little enclave, why don't we pull it off, it can always change, if they change, it might end up the wrong, but I didn't want to, you know, it was sort of a, we, we, we didn't have it in there in the original map, it wasn't in there, and I said, well, let's, let's put it in, let's, let's see, there's nothing, there's only one way to find out, right?
We were watching.
Yeah. But everybody's, you know, it's, there's always a little, you know, one, one person would say, well, this is a great place for a, a village of small homes, but then, you know, there's a lot of, and, and in that, in that area, I put, I, you know, I don't know, I, I think I put, personally, I, I, I put the, the wishes of the residents right there, because it's such a nice, I, I understand wanting to protect the, what they have there, and it's still, you know, as I explained to the group today, okay, because that, that parcel's not one, that's on the market, it went on the market two weeks ago, and, you know, someone could go in and do a conventional subdivision, and, and I've never walked that lot, I've had no in error, in that, in the area, it has, it says, you know, twelve developable lots, and so I explained to the neighborhood meeting, I said, oh, if you go in there, and they did a conventional subdivision, twelve lots would pretty much eat up that whole space by the time, you know, you know, we all know what it would take, so I said, okay, I would certainly support, I would hope of that, you know, for an increase of whatever, two or three, you know, flexible development, although it's, it would be more homes, it'd be small homes, but it would be a much less, you know, that's, it would be a substantially smaller development footprint, which would allow to go and look at that parcel, just like we did at Weber, and say, okay, what, you know, what, what would be nice to preserve here, you know, and, and kind of custom, custom shape something versus just, you know, I don't think it's, what.
Because I do think that lot, in a, not in a similar way, because they're two totally different parcels, is a little bit like the Shaw's lot in that it's so unique, it's, it's one of the larger chunks of available land, if you exclude the development that we just heard earlier, and I agree that it's a little bit challenging to lump that whole parcel into the same small little lot that's got a single-family house on it right now, in terms of size and massing and all of that, so I, I don't know if that's sort of what you were at all alluding to.
You totally lost me, I'm sorry. But, I, I would never say, I would, I would, you're talking about the lot on South Street.
Right.
Yeah, we were talking about the lot on South Street, you were just basically saying how, well, for a number of reasons.
Similar to Shaw's lot, only in that, okay, it had potential to, a developer, sure, it had some potential, I guess, but I looked at the reaction from the neighbors, and to me, it wasn't, we would have killed the whole district, and it just wasn't worth it, I mean.
Meaning just at the treatment for what you would do on a lot like that, and maybe Shaw's, which is sort of a different, what you could do because of the size of it and its exact location compared to, say, one of the smaller parcels that is still in the same district, is really different, like, they're both sort of unique in that you'd maybe want to visit whatever the potential project is on a, on a project basis, as opposed to, do you know what I'm saying, like, there's restrictions that were, not restrictions, the zoning that we're allowing for in the Depot or Eastman subdivisions are the same whether it's that smaller lot, or it's a larger lot, and I'm just saying, in the same way that you just talked about, the South Street is being, like, yeah, well, maybe you wouldn't want to put fifty-four units or whatever you just said you could according to, the, the zoning for what you put on Shaw's might look a little different than what you'd want to see on one of, any, any of the other lots that are much smaller, is just my only point.
Can I have a point to your question on that? So the concern for the folks in the area where, you know, when you're talking about the density and everything, is when you're putting it in the area in South Street, and you've got, it's surrounded by a cluster of store, single-family homes, our folks are generally in favor of, you know, the higher density when you're comparing it, like, for the foundry property developments, because of the alternatives, industrial or commercial, so for the Shaw's unit, you know, that parcel, I think folks look at it differently than something like on the South Street, because it's currently commercial, so if you're talking about having some greater density there, I think the general sense that I have for a lot of folks is, they like the idea of shifting the balance over in favor of residential, and the difference being Shaw's, it's already commercial, as opposed to if you have something that's in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood, and that density, it, there's a much different reaction to it.
I totally get that, what I'm saying is more like on Michael Heikel's property, you can build a four-story, forty-five-foot-high building, and that's exactly what you could build on the Shaw's parcel.
Like, should Shaw's be at, under different regulations?
Yeah, or like, would you want to consider it at all differently than you would for that, we just were talking about.
Doesn't the four-story only have to be on a corner, I thought I did catch up, I thought it had to be on a corner.
It's a little less, oh, yes, okay, see, I didn't read the aster.
And don't forget that, well, no, it still has to have, like, I guess it has a hundred and fifty, but I mean, I, I, yeah, but we can't, we don't have somebody's sub-district, straight, or it's gonna get, you know, and.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And, you know, and again, this is all, you know, we can always, you know, whatever, hopefully something gets passed the town meeting, whatever it is, you know, just the beauty of zoning, we can change it as, as it goes, I mean, look at, we look at Quisit, we did that two years ago, three years ago, and loved it, it came a great, great process, but still nothing's happened, I mean, and it's projects were approved, but there's no spade around yet, and, but, you know, if, you know, but if, if things start to go, I guess what I'm trying to say is if things start to go more in one direction than what we would have liked, we can always change it.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, because it's such a small, such a small area. No one really likes to see the sausage, man.
But Deborah, you made this comment, a, a similar comment, uh, in the last discussion, was that you were looking for more differentiation in building scale? And that, and that these buildings, the, these buildings look no different than the residential?
Right, that, and that's true, or, or they're. I think we're hoping that the development itself would provide the variation, but just based on the numbers themselves, I think that, yeah, there's not really that much variation, but I, it is a really challenging thing that we're trying to.
Well, and they're, don't get, they're, they're still.
I'm just kind of thinking out.
No, I'm, I'm not here, and but we still have.
And we're probably didn't have the Shaw's, and we had the other parcels, and just kind of trying to take it off, and.
There's still a clause, there's still a clause in here that lets us, that lets us tweak things, even setback, and that's why at first, when I was disagreeing with Bob on the, because I thought, you know, the special permit was the way that we could, you know, because we've done it, and we've been, we've successfully helped mold some things that came in at first in a way we didn't like, but I've come, you know, spoke to a few people, and it came out, and I'm like, okay, well, we can do that, we can still do that through site plan review, but we just need, we've actually done that a couple of times, site plan review, without even knowing it, we just need to, it needs to be, they meant, we need to make sure it's administered, that's where we're kind of, things have fallen through the, you know, but we can, that's easily remedied, you know, there's no, you know, and, so. So we can, I guess what I'm trying, we can help, these are, that everything's gonna get developed overnight, people still come in, but Michael Heikel, for example, he's been in for his apartment a couple of times, had a couple of ideas, and we were like, yeah, hey, you know, let's try to do this, or that, or the, just like we do with duplexes, you know, so, we just, you know, we do, it's, so we can. Just like we do with duplexes, you know, so we just, you know, we do, it's uh, so we can, I think we can still get that. Cut, the site context, I think, I think you're talking about, we'll still really get that.
Yeah, I mean, I think Robert ma- maybe made a comment that just made me think of, like, about what, what we all maybe have some dreams or thoughts for that parcel. And I, and I'm just saying that, yes, we're not differentiating it at all in our zoning though, in terms of height or.
What parcel are you talking about now, just the Shaw's one?
Yeah, cause we've already eliminated the other one, and I understand why we've eliminated it. I, and I was only, my only point of comparison was that I know originally we had talked about how most of the parcels are not that large. So that those are two of the most developable parcels, but I understand why we've eliminated the one on South Street, and that's something very well may end up getting developed there anyway, like regardless of size or.
Yeah, I think something is.
So I mean, but I'm just talking about the, 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 yeah.
I'm just trying to get, cause I, you're, you're kinda, I think you might be headed in a direction where I've been. Are you suggesting that, you know, there's, so in a certain sense, I think that we are differentiating it, because that is a much larger parcel. And so you're able to do more on it, but it's like, you know, it's like Washington DC, it can only be so high and, you know, what have you. But because it's larger, you can still do a project of a larger scale. I mean, are you suggesting that you would wanna do something even larger, given the fact that it is right on the corner of a major thoroughfare and?
Yeah, I think, I think what you could, what I might wanna do and what you could do there would be on a much grander scale than what I would imagine would happen on the corner, on a much smaller parcel, which has the same zoning.
I am ten thousand percent with you on that. And I think, but I do think that um the, just the parcel sizes is what sort of, uh, it's, it's, it's self policing as Greg used earlier.
Right. It's all eliminated.
But but if I could just make one other point, but but I think that there, that is a perfect example of why I think that we've gotta up the the density, up the maximum units on these uh parcels, because these are not even remotely close, in my opinion, to where they need to be.
Okay, but now, reality check, we're not in the vacuum, and I, I hear what you're saying, here we go, but two-thirds is a huge hurdle, and sometimes, you know, um, you're coming to a town that has not allowed multifamily for years, right? And to now all of a sudden, um, a lot of people, I've heard there's a lot of residents, a lot of residents in this area think we're, we're already going too far. So, you know, sometimes maybe, it might be better, let's go part of the way, let's see what happens, and then go more. I I I know we're, cause I know there's interest in doing large projects, but it's all up at Eastman, everything that we've seen today. Now, that doesn't mean something's not gonna happen on Shaw's, it'd be great to have this great area, but, you know, I just think we need to, still the majority, the majority of the parcels in this area are um, are smaller. And they're gonna be a big part of the, it's not gonna do us any good if we have one big project up there, one big project there, and status quo in the middle. We need it to be, you know, to be everywhere, we, to beautify the entire district, we need it all to go. Um but if we, if we just freak people out with huge densities, we're not even gonna get the target, that's not the target, you know. Where you still, you know, we gotta figure out, all of this, we're all from an engineering.
We're spending all, we're spending all this time on it, and I just, you know, and I think everybody does have a vision of how they want this thing to go. I'm just, at at these density numbers, this is just doomed to fail, it's like, why even, why even bother? I I don't see it as, I mean, you're gonna get either more of the same of what you've got, and I'm talking about the Depot street area, cause that to me is the most important piece, in terms of what people want for this entire area. That's the part that people are gonna wanna walk to, that's the part where there's going to be, you know, potentially restaurants and interesting shops that, you know, could possibly get, you know, kind of close together, that you might be actually interested in walking to, if there's a sidewalk in there in ten years. That is, I think on the Eastman side, you're talking more about, you know, larger scale, that's where you can potentially hit some real numbers with affordable housing and all that, and I think we're all in agreement on that. I just think that if you don't do the appropriate density at that location, it's either not gonna change at all, which is gonna really make people upset, or you're gonna end up with a situation where it's just more of the same. And, you know, that is, that is my concern.
But keep in mind, more of the same, what's there now is because, first of all, it was on the downside when it was first, it was the highway, before the highways, right? And then it kind of went through that, you know, hasn't been sewer, so you have not had opportunities, you know. And and then don't forget, you talk about, you still gotta put the cars somewhere. So, you know, where, most of these lots are still acre, acre two, quarter mile acre. Um you're gonna have to have drainage, you're gonna have to have, you know, um, yeah, we have, this is twenty percent open space requirement. You have to have dumpsters, you know, where you're gonna put all these cars, so you, you, you just gotta, and you have to remember that this town, I think, is a little shell-shocked, a lot of folks are, because there's been a lot of apartments, a lot of large-scale apartments that have come in. So, in some ways, what we're trying to do here is create, and and I know you, you know, you're not gonna get the big players on, on, on a project with, you know, four or eight units, but it it's still a viable it's still a viable project for a small developer, and that's mostly what we're gonna be in base.
Well, I, that's what you're gonna get if it's a small project.
But that's, but that's, but it's over, that's, I mean, there's some, I mean, Shaw, sure, I mean, Shaw, but, you know, up the other end, there's, there's, there's more opportunity. But then we just look at geographic, and there's just not much, there's just.
No, but if you, if you have, if you have one acre, and you can put, let's say, twelve units on it, then it becomes something that's more appetizing for a developer, even even a mid-range developer. I mean, if you're just talking about putting four units on top of a commercial space, you know, it's, it's not gonna be worth it. It's just too complicated to, to worry about all the factors that you have to worry about in order to bring that development in. It's too expensive, too.
Four, four units on top, that would be the ten thousand, so.
I, yeah, I've still got that in my mind, because it's written here.
It's eight. Yeah, so, so it's, so we drive.
So, I think it gets you closer, like we were suggesting last, last time we were here, and I said, look, that's better than nothing. I mean, I'll go along with that if, if that's all we have here in terms of our collective appetites, but I don't think it's enough. I should, I think it should probably be double that.
Okay. Well, and I, I, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, but maybe that's, that, like Greg said, it, it's one step towards the right direction, and then five years, ten years from now, it gets adjusted again to further, maybe it's a, about a ten-year plan.
I almost see it the opposite. Try it the one way, and if that doesn't work, or it doesn't look like it's going well.
Yeah, but try to get to, to, to thirds, you get to those town meetings, that's what dictates all of this, this is, you know.
I think messaging is gonna be important, I guess the, the, the question is, what do people here want? I mean, that's, that's really step one. And, you know, then you can worry about the messaging.
I, I think maybe this is something that we can also ask Judy, if there's a way to either build something into the language that maybe offers, it's not just an outright no, there's some clause for consideration, particularly on that larger parcel, and I do think it's unique to any other areas in the district, and even in Easton, cause I, I've always said this, we've got all those historic landmarks, and the center of town is Main Street, but so many people don't actually ever turn and go down Main Street, people go through Easton, and that is hello, welcome to Easton. So what do we want welcome to Easton to look like? And I guess my point is just that our zoning for that whole, that whole area is the same, and that is the one opportunity to maybe do something a little bit, maybe not a hot mark, cause I agree with you, Greg, I think change and change in Easton, that's, that's, that's been hard, that's, that's a challenging case.
It's hard everywhere, it's hard everywhere.
I'd rather see like, like, yes, um, all of these other areas to have a really good opportunity to be developed and, and that whole street become um, have more continu- continuity and be re, you know, re- rejuvenated. But I think that that, cause we didn't have, remember, we didn't have the Shaw's parcel in there originally, and I'm not sure that I think we should get rid of it. We don't, I think, I don't think they've always, have we had it in there from the very beginning?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's such a, to me, that, but say, I guess, you know, I, I think it's a part of room too, that, you know, if someone is interested in doing a project, they'll come talk to us. We've changed, we've amended zoning plans, or, or.
That's true.
We wanna make, we don't wanna think this thing to death, because we do have such a, you know, it's a unique district, cause there's, it's kind of hooked, you know, it's bookended by a couple of large pieces, but, yeah, one's already occupied with, with the shopping lots on it. Um and then in between, there's a whole bunch of, of things. So, you know, I think we should, we're probably reached the point of the thing where we're kinda going in a circle. I think we have, if I'm not right, I think we have enough to outright revise and give to Judy, tell me if you think we're missing anything. And then, so, I mean, the, we'll get, get to what we worked at, we just have to, the numbers, the, you know, the, the densities, that's what we have to, and, and you know, uh, what are we gonna do with affordability, but we have to, you know, let's all think about it, and we'll serve them back here in a couple of weeks, and try to figure it out, you know, um.
I, I can say a couple of things, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, yeah.
One is, um, that the double, the, the, the double uh, uh, stars.
You have a five hour time.
If the double, the double stars gives you the ability to, to increase the density to ten units in the Depot street by special permit.
Up without, up to ten without a special permit, you can go over ten.
So there's.
With the special permit would be, how about that?
Right, that's a match. I, I, yeah, I agree with Chris.
So it's ten without a special permit? You could go up to a hundred with a special permit.
So that seems to be the thing you're looking for, the, the special clause?
Yeah, which is something that would allow.
That's still limiting it to three stories potentially.
Right, height, in terms of height, yeah.
Right.
And then a couple other points, um, Deb, you had said, Deb, I don't keep.
Yeah, yeah, Deb's got it.
Okay, um, so you had said before that you were looking for properties to be a little closer to the street for that. Um and she has, she does have her um appendix B and uh with the frontage. And so I wanted to point that out, appendix B. So you do have, you do have, um, Depot is twenty-five foot instead of fifty in residential area. Rear and side, and so I didn't know if these were close enough, if you'd like to change those numbers? Or if these one, or if I should point it out and say, think about it? So.
Yeah, I haven't entertained that, but you brought up a point earlier about um whether or not we were talking about four potentially detached units as opposed to like a conglomeration. And I feel like that's a very important thing to think about.
Sure.
And could impact that side a lot more.
Yeah, well, take a look at.
So I feel like that's something we should.
Yeah, ta- like, I look at the residential stuff, the residential lots actually in that area, and I was like, okay, realistically, what could happen? And they, cause if we were going to allow, we, we need some sort of dimensions, and I, so I started like, maybe going down with two, you know, or three, or do we, you know.
Do we allow, yeah.
Do we, do we differentiate between all of this detached versus, you know, um, the um, attached, or do you?
How can I articulate that to her, so she can start thinking, if she reads my email?
I'll, I'll talk to you in the morning, I'll give you a better one.
Okay.
I'm on fumes.
Maybe you can just kind of bring it up, why not just attach?
Can I have her comment?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's too similar.
Because it would really be like, almost like four units.
Okay. Um, can I just also ask, I have a, she, she keeps using square footage as if square footage is any, you know, all land is equal. In most of the rest of your zoning, it's, it's, wetland areas are taken out.
Yeah, developable. Yeah, we, we have inherent, de- developable lot, that's defined, so you just call it develop, yeah, developable area.
So I. I'll hand that back in there. Yes. Yes. Yeah, they do. And then I did ask about one, I got two other things.
Sure, sure.
Um, I did ask about laundry mats, because they are high use, high water use, and now this, now we've got sewer, where you never changed your use table when you had sewer before, so laundry mats, are you okay?
I won't be one of your investors, but if you wanna include it, yeah. Not only does it demand more, but, you know, I, that's, but it's fine.
You obviously have been, you've been a long way away from college.
No, but we're nowhere near Stone Hill, and I would say, within a three-mile radius of this district, ninety-nine percent of the buildings either have laundry rooms or access to laundry. So, what you said, but what about oversized comforters, I said, I, but no one's gonna build a business.
Yeah.
Can you imagine going to the bank and saying, I'm gonna open a laundry mat for people? But it's the demand on oversized comforters. You know, I wouldn't even get a cheap plastic pen out of them.
So, um, the other one is, I just wanted to point out on the map, you brought the, you brought the commercial district down to the little gas station on Highland and Foundry. They are two lots that are not developed, in between them, well, the group did.
I did.
And I just wanted you to, did you want those to be added, because the gas station didn't fare so well in a variance decision? A variance uh.
I, those three properties scare me, what was in the last few years, I'd rather they not be in there.
I, me too. I, I, I want, that's why I'm bringing it to attention, there's a lot of concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're talking about.
I'm, I'm not here.
Oh, over on Easter?
Yeah.
On the left side of the lot?
So this, this is Northeast and Saginaw Corporate, that corner, these, these three, right?
Yeah, and there's the convenience store on the corner.
Cause that's, that's what's got some interior to it.
Yeah, the meters, yeah. They do, but it, it's, there's a lot of wet.
Yeah, no, we, and we can always add it later, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah, that's, that's.
Trouble, drop.
Yeah.
Just a question to address some of the tension that you're trying to do, I'm very much in favor of trying to get this thing past the town meeting, trying to balance these concerns. My sense from getting a pulse of our group and from otherwise, um, Walkable Village, ton of support. That, that's what people are looking for, that's what the October visioning charrette people were talking about. If you start talking about a massive development, like an Avalon-like thing in a different part, I fear it's not gonna pass the town meeting. Concern for the traffic in the area and so forth, so you're, you're trying to balance that, right, to, to do something, and that's just sort of my sense from having a pulse of our group and others around town. For what it was worth, I think I've always been about it.
So.
The name, we got the, we got the, we got the name.
So, quick, quick question, so you're gonna, you're gonna um send something to uh Judy tomorrow? And I know you, you ran me through the dates, I just came up, so, are you gonna give her like a, a deadline to get it to us? Or not getting it the night before, the email, and so she can, last week or something, kind of thing, yeah.
Yep, I, I had. I had said that I'd give it to her on Wednesday, which means I have to keep my commitment.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
She should give it back to us on the twenty-seventh of February, which is the Thursday before your March, your, the first meeting in March.
On March second, or?
Sorry. Yeah, I'd say, though, it's not that much of a, that's.
And then the next day, I would give her more feedback, um, so that, but we have to post, whatever, whatever comes out on March third, we have to post for public view, because that's only two weeks before the hearing.
Yeah. Sure.
I have been, I've been, I've been talking about putting together a one-page summary of what you're trying to achieve, and use that as the posting as long as we can, until you have good language.
Instead of more.
Instead of the, instead of the actual, instead of the actual language.
Well, considering, I mean, do you think we can get it a little quicker?
I can't even get it, I can't even get it entirely.
I know, but I know she's a performer, but I mean, cause it's not talking, you start with structure, right? It's not that many changes, nine days, why can't we get her seven days? Cause as far as, we get it on Thursday, what if someone's gonna wait for a Friday, I just, we can't, it's so late for her, and like, sometimes it's, you know what I mean? It's nice to get things and not have to decide it very second, go into meetings, it's nice to have a couple days, you know.
I'd like a, you know, if we could ever get a week where, you know, if this is something where we're reasonably at a point where, you know, we might make this public, I'd like to really comb through.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So I think, and for our, every, you know, we, and we kind of know what we just talked about, but I, I think just process, you know, in our heads, we need to think about, cause I know it's gonna become an issue, um, we need to think about, you know, the, the overall density, and, and the whole affordability, like, do we wanna, you know, what triggers it, to, you know, we, you know, it does not be triggered on this, on this. To, you know, we, you know, it does not have to be triggered on a, on a small floor, but I know, um. I, I just know the, the, the leaders of the town that want us to have something in the S H I, as we get into bigger projects, so just the time. So, and I would say, so look at how we did, it's in the use tables, but look at the Queeser Commercial District, and even look at the Compact Neighborhood, you know, probably do that. And it'll give you, um, give you some ideas, um, okay, so, we're, we're good with that for now?
Oh, you, oh, can we have votes on warrant articles for placeholders?
So moved, now how many, four, five, maybe a bunch, you're gonna need use table, file art cell.
No, just a vote to all public carries.
That too.
Can we, what do we say, up to, oh, go into the list of all?
No, but, but.
Up to six.
You want placeholders for, okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, just to.
And you're gonna do village business district, like instead of just happen, right?
Yeah, village business district. We will, cause you know what we'll do, in the next, we can do, this is legal, right, in the next, um, whatever, the next week, you and I sit down, we, we're already kinda touched on it. We're just changing a couple of numbers.
Yep.
And then you can send it to these guys.
Okay.
Right, that's, there's no wrong, reason why we do that, yeah.
No, no wrong. It's as if I thought of a business.
So, cause it was just, it's just a, it's just a density, and do I get, what, do I get a portion of the contract, and you and I?
Um, so was that a motion?
Yes, that's an elegant one, it does.
And he has a question.
Yeah, um, Greg made motion, and it got seconded by, by Rob.
So is it, would you imagine?
Can I ask for, can I ask for, um, add an amendment to that motion? To, uh, would you like to accept a street, um.
Yes, yeah, Silverway, Silverway.
Silver Drive, which, um, which Mr. Doug King came in for in December to reduce his, his bomb down to miniscule four thousand dollars just to take care of hatching over the winter.
And it should be pending, obviously, well, we'll, 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 we'll be going, it'll be pending.
We have, we have a draft, we have a draft D, so if you can, and, and I've got an ASB, so I just need.
You see a final inspection, so.
I did, yeah, Greg, uh, Swan wants to go back out. And then do you wanna second, that was, that was an amendment, and then I heard, I heard somebody.
I, I, you make them, someone make a motion, I think, yeah, on the chair, oh.
Are we motioning for the Silver Drive?
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion to approve the Silver Drive.
Well, that's just for amendments, I just heard, um.
Placehold.
Placehold, and warrant.
Placeholders and warrant.
I thought we already did that one.
Not, not for the Doug King one, they need to be seconded.
Okay, so it was, so that was approved, and I think.
And who seconded?
Some good TV happening here. Better, better for ten.
And then, uh, and then, um, and Suzanne wants a vote, that you're gonna hold a hearing on March sixteenth on zoning amendments.
So moved, is there a second, all those in favor, motion passes.
I made motion. You did?
Okay, how about meeting minutes, who wants to make a motion on the January, January eighteenth and February?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on January twenty-eighth.
Second.
Any further discussion, there are none, all those in favor.
No, February third.
Oh, February third.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on February third.
Second.
Any further discussion, and I'll, very well. He's crazy, he's mad.
Yes.
Next meeting is a G A request, I might, I might, I think it's a question.
Yo, I love these new binders, but we need a staple here for now, it's like a staple stuck together, I can't get home.
Do we have anyone else?
I can do that, I can write staples.
Just a thought, you know, cause.
I'm a safer stapper.
But I keep on a little separated chair, I don't take those, I'm, I'm a good boy. Um, alright, so, oh, we have, so we have G B A requests.
We've got, we've got plenty of colored paper, if you wanna take this, you can take the whole thing out.
No, 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 I don't wanna take those.
Can we signal something?
Uh, David, I'm sorry.
Opposition, yeah.
G B A request for comments, uh, two of, two prospects.
I was, I was. I feel like, um, yeah, we should do that at the next meeting because.
What, bring a staple?
No, do the, um, request for comment.
No, we can't.
Oh, they need it by then?
Because.
No, the meeting is after ten.
Oh, okay, you know, all right.
And you have another one, I'll read. Okay.
All right, no, no, they are stating we can't, we can't.
I felt like one of them, I was gonna elicit a little bit of.
So.
The meeting is March tenth, I have a question.
So, you know, meeting's after, so we're okay, okay, so, um, so we can, we can push, we'll push one, that's right.
Wanted to just ask.
All right, who wants to bring us home? You're gonna. Damn, I think we're gonna be dead in four, I'll have you.
Okay, no, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, if you're gonna drive the sled, you're gonna be a little more, uh, sure, you're stuck, cause that's such a. My god, a pence could handle it, all those are fair, thank you, we, sorry we got silly, but it's been a long night, thank you, E C A.
I think I only ever made a motion once, when I didn't realize that maybe I always did it when I first joined the board, and I've not done it since then, so.
Sort of, yeah. Thank you, kids, I did it once, I didn't have enough sass, that was the, hey, that wasn't bad.
I didn't have, I didn't have the right word, so.
I thought I was gonna get a glass. Cause, uh, a, a certain person who came here to speak, um, over the weekend sent a, um.
Lot of.
A section of a, of a plan, of the foundry, showing, with all these shopery rocks, so she wanted to post it up on a big screen. Then I got it Friday.